Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, October the 3rd. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists, all the topists may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. And do we have any public comments this evening from the board?
No.
I just want to say thank you to the Economic Development Committee, the Chair, Josie Gilchrist, and Matt Brenner as well, and all the people who were involved at Low Ranch, who hosted the event on last Thursday. It was very, very successful. They had lots of people, both town elected and appointed officials, town employees, and businesses represented across the town. It was really a good showing and a great strengthening of the economic environment event for Lunenburgs. So I want to thank everybody who made that possible.
All right, thank you. Any additional public comments from the board?
I just want to echo those sentiments as well. That was a, it was a very good turnout for, you know, for the inaugural event. And I really, I always kind of wanted to know what was down that driveway. I'd never gone down there. It was absolutely gorgeous. So I guess it's a beautiful setting.
All right, thank you. And I just want to acknowledge the thank you received from the Boys and Girls Club, and this is related to their receipt of ARPA funds. So the board has seen this, and I just want to again thank the Boys and Girls Club for this nice warm letter of card of thanks, and then also want to extend the same thanks to the Lunenburg Library Trustees, who also submitted a similar thanks to the Select Board. All right, we're going to turn to public comments this evening. Do we have any public comments from the public?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Phyllis Luck, 50 Sunset Lane. I'm speaking for myself and my husband tonight, my husband of 52 years.
Congratulations.
Thank you. As most of the members of the Select Board know, since February, we have been questioning why the activities of the tax investigation team have not been adhering to the open meeting law. When formally challenged by an open meeting law complaint, the town's official legal response was essentially that there was no subcommittee created or intended to be created, only three people working independently and regularly reporting to the public. Clearly, neither of those claims are accurate. This is not what was verbalized or demonstrated by the team lead, Chairman Jeffries. After appealing to the town and the state for six months, this week, the State Office of Open Government issued its determination. It was, and I quote, "that the team was a public body subject to the open meeting law and that it failed to comply with the law." The state further, and I quote, "ordered its, the team, immediate and future compliance with open meeting law and cautioned that similar violations in the future may be considered evidence of an intent to violate the law." It can only be speculated as to why the town worked so hard to avoid an open process in spite of being challenged since February. But to us, it's more obvious every day that there has been little progress made relative to the root cause of this tax debacle. Fortunately, the state's determination and direction are timely, as there is still time and certainly the need for this process to come out from behind the curtain. Hopefully, in addition to completing the investigation, the team will take a critical look at the process, their behavior, and decisions, such as choosing to ignore basic open meeting law principles, even if they rationalized it might not be required. We need to hold this team, public body, as they like to be called, in spite of what was demonstrated by their actions, accountable for getting to the true root cause of the 2023 tax debacle and identifying constructive corrective actions to make sure it never happens again. We are sure that many of us look forward to turning this unfortunate page and participating in what now will become an open process. Hopefully, the next act of the investigation team will be to schedule a series of open, in-person meetings to address ongoing residents' concerns, finish the investigation, and compile a final report with recommendations, as promised back in January, 10 very long months ago. In the interim, we suggest that the town demonstrate its desire to be open by following the recommendations of the state. Again, I quote from the determination's conclusions, "We note that any emails exchanged between members of the team concerning the investigation may be public records, subject to disclosure under the public records law, and we encourage the team to proactively release to the public any such emails," end of quote. We would suggest that putting them on the town website immediately would be a great start, which would also avoid further multiple public records requests. Finally, along this line, and having experienced great resistance on the part of our town manager to make information available to the public, it's like pulling teeth actually, we are hereby formally requesting electronic copies of all communications between the investigation team members, as well as between any members of the team and contractors or other organizations and individuals regarding this effort. Should this information in its entirety be on the town website within the next 10 working days, we will be happy to record, withdraw this request. We, as well as most, have become very accustomed to getting no response or acknowledgement to public comment from the Select Board, so we expect none tonight. However, should you choose to address any of what I or the state have said, as presidential candidate Ross Perot once said, "we're all ears." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Selectmen. Luck, do you have any other public comments this evening from the public?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I will respond, because I think there was a lot of inaccuracies in that public comment. There were some accuracies, but some inaccuracies. As a member of the team and somebody mentioned in the open meeting law, or request or violation, I will say, first of all, that the implication or the insinuation that something insidious is going on, I can tell you straight out that is absolutely not true. Because I can tell you, and the rest of the team is up here too and can dispute that, I can tell you the amount of times that our team met, and that is zero. So we met zero times during that whole thing. There were some email exchanges, mostly of documents. So, you know, to your, the fact of the findings of the state with regard to those, you're certainly allowed to get them for a public records request, so. But we did not meet at all, never discussed this in any personal way. The fact that it was done individually was absolutely how it was done. And so there's no, you know, your... The color that you put on it, that there was some, you know, nefarious thing going on, was not at all true, because there was no behind-the-scenes deliberations of any Secondly, I am commenting, so therefore, you know, there you go. So you should take that into consideration. I'm not against shying away from this. I would also say, for the record, and this is me as one person who just read the report, you know, their finding, that their finding is, has a numerous amount of ambiguity and contradiction. So it's not as clear-cut as you may seem. Certainly, that was their finding, and I, as one member, dispute the finding, and I don't know we, as a board, if we're going to dispute the finding officially, but certainly I do, because the intent as portrayed by the, our town council in support of that, that we did not think at any point that we were creating that. Now, they may differ in their opinion, but the intent of what the creation of that investigation team was for is certainly not anything they can define. They can define what they believe to be procedurally what was happening, but that was not the intent of what was going on. So with all of those in mind, I would say that those are the inaccuracies I wanted to point out. As far as getting to the root cause, I think that the, the report from the independent contractor who we hired came up with the root cause that I support. And so there are other things that need to be addressed in the department, and hopefully we will be coming to a conclusion on addressing those. But the root cause was completely, you know, disclosed in the outside contractor's final report, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso. Are there any other public comments from the public? Mr. Luck.
Carl Luck, 50 Sunset Lane. And I hadn't planned this, but, and I appreciate a response, be it as it may. However, I didn't identify, I didn't hear a single inaccuracy. I heard some concerns about implications, but implications are in the mind of the beholder. If there are inaccuracies, that, we would love to hear that. I can't speak for the state, but I can say that I'm not at all surprised, based on the progress and results, that there have been no, in the discussions at this board, that there were no meetings of that subcommittee. However, no meetings does not mean that open meeting law wasn't violated, because it was a subcommittee of three people, so any two people having a discussion about the topic would be a violation. And on many occasions, the chairman relayed and assured the town that he was working virtually daily with the town manager on this report. Any of those discussions would have been concrete violations of open meeting law. So I don't see any inconsistencies. I see the same, except the state, who did unbelievable amount of work reviewing all of your meetings and all of the minutes and, and all of that. So they didn't just casually come to this conclusion. And as I say, the mere fact of, of the Chair and the town manager regularly having discussions about the charter of that team is, is a violation of open meeting law. But let's go forward, adhering to open meeting law, unless the board also discuss an open decision to try and somehow override the state. I don't know how that would work. So I think it's all quite clear, and insinuations aside, everything that was said was accurate and was verbatim quotes from the state's conclusions. Thank you, and I hope you do a better job going forward.
All right, thank you for those comments. Any other public comments this evening from the public? All right, seeing none, we're going to go to announcements. Do we have any announcements this evening?
A few. We have the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new ADA patio at the Adult Activity Center that is on Wednesday, October 11th, at noon, rain or shine. So we're all looking forward to that event and seeing the completion. They were working hard today on getting the sod down and all the landscaping done, so it will be done in time. Halloween trick-or-treating hours will be Tuesday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. The special town meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 14th, at 7:00 PM at the middle school, high school auditorium. The finance public hearing is on October 12th at 7:00 PM in this meeting room. And that's all for announcements.
All right, thank you. All right, communications from other boards. We did get a request from the Conservation Commission, related to staffing. I did defer them over to the town manager. I don't see them here with us this evening, so I will follow up with them on how everything went.
I had a meeting with the Assistant Town Manager, and I had a meeting with them yesterday.
Yeah, okay. All right, appointments. So tonight, we have a 7:10 appointment. We're running just a couple of minutes late. Lunenburg Boys and Girls Club requests to close Memorial Drive on Saturday, October the 21st, from 4:00 to 10:00 PM, and reschedule date for toll booth fundraiser for Saturday, October the 14th. And this is with Chris Martins and Maddy Dane.
Maddy's not here.
All right, please come to the podium, be sure to state your name and address, and then present your request.
All right, Chris Martins, 981 Northfield Road. So I belong to the Board of Directors of the Lunenburg Boys and Girls Club, and we would like to request that on Saturday, October 21st, that we can close Memorial Drive. I'm trying to find the time here. You know the time?
4:00 to 10:00 PM.
4:00 to 10:00 PM. Reason we would like, oh, there we go, right there. Reason I'd like to do that is the event itself runs from 6:30 to 9:30. We do have food trucks coming in, we have a hayride to get set up, we have the Shrieks and Creeks Haunted House and all that stuff. So we'd like to be able to close the road early enough so that there's no traffic going through there for the safety of our vendors and of our personnel, and of the people that are actually coming to the event later in the evening.
So do we have an event request?
Uh, so right here, I'm just reading verbatim off this sheet, which you probably have also. We all know that the Haunted House has been built, it was built a couple of weeks ago by nightaway volunteers. Gary Janow is painting and fireproofing the walls, and actors are coming in to paint and set up their stuff. Lunenburg Police is providing a traffic detail and road closure equipment, and will also unlock the gates behind the library for the hayride. The Lunenburg Fire Department is providing two light towers, and it will do a walk-through inspection at the beginning of the week for the event, mostly for the Haunted House, I believe. The town manager approves, as long as there is no public safety concerns or conflicts with other events. The senior center has approved us using their driveway for the hayride, and just asked that we monitor the handrails along the waiting lines, because kids like to sit on them and stuff. And the library has approved that we use their parking lot for parking, there's no conflicts there, and the DPDW has no concern. So all of these departments have been checked with and have given us their, they're okay.
All right, so this is the annual Shrieks and Creeks event.
Yes.
And so as part of this, you're looking to close Memorial Drive from 4:00 to 10:00 PM to facilitate the event.
Correct.
Promote public safety and, and have area for food trucks.
Correct.
Okay. Are there any questions, comments from the members of the board? And then, well, then we'll get to your second request as well.
Okay.
Which is on the, which is on the toll booth.
Yeah, so the second request is for a voluntary toll booth at the intersection of 13 and, I think that's Hamilton or Highland, I always get the name of that road screwed up over here in the center of town. It's just a, it's a, we had one scheduled in, in September, I believe it was September 16th. It was rained out, so this is the rescheduled rain date for that. That'll be between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM. Be all volunteers, everybody will be over 18, they'll all be wearing yellow vests. I believe we've already gotten permission from the police department to do this, or they're okay to do it. We'll be setting up cones and stuff, there'll be no traffic impediment. And if it does rain on the 14th, we would like to have a rain date of 10:28 for that same event.
So on your application, you note the location's the center, so I want to clarify that you're referring to the lights here in the center of town.
Yes, wherever, direction they are from this building, because I'm not sure where I am.
2A and Lancaster Road.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, are there any questions related to either application from the board or comments?
Both of them, well, I mean, one of them is obviously a makeup of the toll booth, so I'm assuming the virtual toll booth was a no-go.
It was a no-go.
And it's too bad, because I was very interested in seeing how that went, but now I kind of find out how it went. So, so, and the Shrieks and Creeks is something they've been doing for several years, so both of them are regular events, and I have no issue with them.
Right. I mean, Shrieks and Creeks is one of our larger fundraisers, so, and obviously, we'd love to see everybody from the board come and participate in the event.
We came, I think it'd be more shrieks than creeks.
All right, any other comments or questions from the applicant related to the request tonight?
Can we do both of them in one motion?
I would ask them to be separated.
All right, well, I move to approve the Boys and Girls Club request to close Memorial Drive on Saturday, October 21st, from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Second.
All right, any additional discussion? This is typically a vote I abstain from, you know, due to my own issues with Halloween, but I do expect that the board will support this and that it will go forward. Any other comments? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, and I abstain. The motion passes, and we have a motion related to the toll booth.
I move to approve the rescheduled date for the toll booth fundraiser for Saturday, October 14th. Second.
All right, any additional discussion? If yours means I'm fair to the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, the motion passes. So congratulations on both. I hope that you guys are able to raise some good money and keep supporting a good cause, you know, with the children and the families that you guys support.
I appreciate your help tonight.
All right, thank you. All right, we're at our 7:15. We have a meeting with the police chief regarding special town meeting warrant article on the mental health co-response. And we do have in our Google Drives here a presentation from the chief, and looks like he's joined by Officer McNamara. No Hank tonight.
He's old, he's sleeping. He's a cool guy, you know.
We were going to send...
I'm jealous, I'm just jealous.
We were going to put Hank on stage, then we'd know we'd get all the votes, no matter what we needed. Thank you, I appreciate the time tonight in our presentation for the co-response program. I believe we have a PowerPoint? Yes, very good. When I became chief, one of the things that Brad and I sat down, I'm sorry, this is Officer McNamara, Brad McNamara, he's our SRO. He works with Hank, as everybody knows, but one of the conversations we had was talking about the mental health crisis that we see on a regular basis as police officers. Realistically, police officers are really not, they're not trained to handle that as experts, right? We are trained at certain things, and we recognize that we need help, right? Officers need help in this arena, we need help in this field. We had talked about developing a program, a co-response program, with embedding a mental health clinician within the police department with a ride-along with our officers to provide services when somebody's in crisis. The other part of that was to additionally provide follow-up services for people that are in need, because obviously, we can't, you know, we can't keep a clinician here 24 hours a day. So this, this is a program that Officer McNamara and I had started three years ago. We've been working diligently, and I say "we," I mean Brad has been doing a lot of work behind us, but we've, we've come to a point where we're ready to start the program, and that's why we're here before you tonight, to request the funds from the opioid relief funds. All right, so in the partnership, when we talk about a partnership, we're talking about a partnership with Lancaster Police Department and Open Sky Community Services. With that partnership, that's how we felt that would be the best fit for our community, the best fit for our department. Statistically, we don't see that we would benefit from having a clinician 40 hours a week. We would split this clinician with the town of Lancaster, split the costs with them. The clinician would provide on-seat assistance with individual experience in mental health crisis, divert nonviolent, low-level offenders experiencing mental health crisis or substance use disorder away from the criminal justice system. We need to get these folks into treatment. We need to get them away from the criminal justice system and get them back into a functioning member of society. Follow-up services for mental health and substance use disorders. Next slide, please. One of the things that we've seen, this is just some statistics that Officer McNamara was able to develop and bring out. 2021 study, 13.5% of adults 18 to 25 had both substance abuse disorder and, or substance use disorder and a mental health illness in the past year. Nearly 1 in 3 adults had either substance use disorder or mental health illness. Forty percent, 46% of young adults had either substance abuse disorder or a mental health illness. That's a pretty high percentage in young adults. And it, it's across multi-generation and multicultural percentage of adults who meet criteria for both co-occurring disorders, higher among multiracial populations. So you see that amongst all cultures around. Just some quick stats for our department alone. When we talk about co-occurring and mental health evaluations, some of these letters stand for MHEs, Mental Health Evaluations. In 2022, we've seen 36 calls for that, and that's just officers responding to mental health evaluations, calls for service in that, in that arena. Of those, four people were for drug and alcohol addiction or some type of disorder at that point. ODNF is overdose non-fatal. Within the town itself, in 2022, we've seen five non-fatal events, and then in, we had one fatality in town. I'm going to kind of put a caveat on that, because we're a part of a program called SIMS, which is in central Massachusetts, and the program is designed that if one of our residents overdoses in another community, we are notified of that through this management system. Once we get notification of that, one of our SIMS-trained officers will go with a recovery coach, knock on that person's door, and see if we can get them help, see if we can provide them with some type of services. So when we looked at this too, when we looked at having a clinician with us, valuable resource, right? Besides having a clinician with us at that time and a recovery coach, we're going to be able to better serve our community members. The Section 12 is when somebody, we have to commit somebody to the hospital if they're a threat to themselves, we have to get them to the hospital. We had 19 incidences. 2023, this is only till the end of the month of September, we've had 14 mental health evaluation calls, drug and alcohol use, three of them. We had two non-fatalties that we know of in town right now, and we ended up with 15 Section 12s, which is that committal. One of the things, anecdotally, I just wanted to bring up, since Friday, we've received nine calls for mental health evaluations, nine calls. One involved firearm with the threat of suicide. We had two suicide threats involving alcohol. We had five Section 12s that we had to commit people. Just today, this morning, we had another call with a mental health evaluation. We're seeing a spike all of a sudden, and again, in this arena, with the assistance of a clinician, we're going to be able to provide services to those people, much more so than, than a police officer can. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Brad for a little bit. He's going to talk about how this program is actually going to work.
So the thought behind, when a police officer gets called to a mental health call, it's kind of a Band-Aid approach, right? What's the problem, we need to fix it. The clinician will give a higher level of service. So if we get called for a mental health eval, where a police officer might say, hey, listen, you need to go to the hospital, you're being sectioned, which is, you know, we're forcing you to go to hospital for a mental healthy eval at the hospital, it'll happen in that person's house, so we're not displacing them from the house. And that clinician might say, you know what, it's better off to bring them to this program, and we'll get them in this program instead of stuffing them in the hospital. So it'll benefit the community. Where a police officer will go and they'll be, hey, I got to deal with this, and I got to go on to the next call, this clinician, this officer that is with them is trained, they can spend an hour, they can spend two hours. It's their job to follow up with these things. It's their job to follow up and check up on them. So they'll do anything that has a mental health component. They'll, if it, there's a domestic violence incident, if there's a substance abuse incident, if someone calls asking for help with substance abuse, elder stuff, and obviously, the mental health component. This model was pioneered in Framingham, and it's taken off all across the state and actually the world. The Republic of Ireland actually came out to Framingham to learn about this, because it's so successful at diverting people from the criminal justice system, getting them help, and getting them back on their feet, and that's what this is all about. It's providing resources to the town and helping people, that's it. And sometimes, people respond better to a clinician. And sometimes people respond better to a clinician as opposed to a police officer, so it's, so it's a partnership. You know, hey, you wanna talk to the clinician, be my guest, I'll step over here. And, you know, the police officer in that instance will just provide safety to make sure anything doesn't happen. And it's, towns all across the Commonwealth have this embedded clinician co-response model, and we'd like to bring it here to Lunenburg.
When we talked about bringing this program, we will develop a mutual aid agreement in an MOU with Open Sky. That is the, Open Sky is the partnership we're looking for, for the clinician. 20 hours a week in each community. What we decided to, when we had this conversation with Lancaster, if there's a crisis in one town or the other and that clinician is there, they would provide that clinician to us, or vice versa. As long as that clinician is not tied up on a call with us. So it's, we say 20 hours in our town, but it could be more, or it could be less, you know, whichever town is in need of crisis at that point. The clinician will provide outreach services, whether it's substance use, mental health. We talk about casualty events, notifications, death notifications. They're able to provide that service for us while they're with us. Oftentimes, officers are tasked with making notifications to family members if something happens out of town. Very difficult situation to put a police officer in who's in uniform to, to talk to people about losing a loved one, when we can provide a clinician for them. Next slide, please. On the cost, so the money that we're seeking through the opioid relief fund is $79,032 is what we're, what's been given to us from Open Sky. This is for a full year clinician and the associated costs with us. This money would be split between the Town of Lunenburg and Lancaster. We would be the host community, so we have to provide that money first, and they would re, the Town of Lancaster would reimburse us at that point. DMH grant funding. Some questions were brought up about funding and, and how would this move forward? Currently, we are applying for a $200,000 grant through DMH is to evolve this program. To make this program become a true CIT, critical, you know, intervention team response. So as the, as this grows, we look for a funding source that'll keep this program going. We don't want to be a flash in the pan, we want this program to grow and develop and assist our community members. So, that grant is a rolling grant, we're currently applying for it now. One of the things that Brad and I talked about is if that grant comes in, and before this money is, is allocated to us, and it supplies our costs for that year, we will return the money to the fund. No questions asked, just, and we'll take the grant money. Some of the things that, you know, we talk about funding for this and, and the source funding and we, you know, we have to look down the road in how are we gonna continue to fund this program? We will fight tooth and nail to keep looking for grant money to continue to bring this program to this community. There is a need, there's a need not only on the mental health aspect, but it's also a need on the, on the substance use aspect, the co-occurring incidences. Couple things that were brought to my attention is, you know, what if a family comes to us that can't afford treatment for substance use, right? We would never turn them away. Open Sky is gonna provide us with a resource that we can get those families or that person a resource. Whether it's through grant funding, whether it's through, you know, gift funding, whatever it may be, we're gonna find that resource and we're not gonna turn anybody away. There's very limited, and for me, the system is broken because there's very limited treatment facilities that are free to the public. I think every one of you know that. This is a step in the right direction, that we can provide a free service to people through, through clinical work that they can actually talk to somebody and get to that resource. I did look up a couple of things prior to this meeting tonight to see if there was actually any facilities in our general area that provide free treatment. Throughout the, from 495 out this way, I found four. Lahey Clinic, SMOK, Serenity House, which is in Lister, Spectrum House in Lister, and Roots at Evergreen and Gardner. And again, you know, with the amount of residents that we have in central Mass, it's very limited resources. So it's something that we feel we can bring to this community and provide a great service. That's what I have for now, I'll open it up to questions and hopefully we can answer them all.
All right, I wanna start tonight with a couple of questions and comments. We had a dog hearing a couple weeks ago, and I have goats. And I made a point in that dog hearing not to mention that I have goats because I did not think it was at all relevant to the, to the discussion and the task that was before the board. But, you know, I think I've said several times that I'm a retired military police officer, and I do think that that experience is quite relevant to your request tonight. One of the things that, that I know, and, and we can look up statistics from the National Institute of Health, and it says that 85% of people who are in prison either have a substance abuse problem or committed crimes for which they're there under the influence of drugs and alcohol. That's 85% of our prison population suffers from drug and alcohol issues in some kind of form. You know, recently, we had, you know, police reform, which in a very small part, I supported it, and overwhelmingly, I did not, as I'm sure most officers do not. You know, because I think the result of this is that we've entered this new climate where officers have somewhat of a hesitance because of how they're, how they can be perceived by just doing their job. And we've all seen the innumerable videos of people getting pulled over and alleging that they know their rights and disregarding lawful orders issued by officers. So I recognize that from my own experience, that we're in a very odd climate right now when it comes to how you respond to policing matters. As you know, not everyone needs a law and order-type response. And so what you're proposing, I think, is a fair solution, which is, you know, being able to provide that clinical aspect to, you know, join members of the public who need services, not necessarily police help, but who need services and, and kind of bridge that divide. Because right now, prisons become homes, housing institutions for the mentally ill largely, and people with substance abuse issues. You know, my initial reservations on this were related to the funding. And, you know, whether or not opioid, you know, settlement funds should be used for this purpose. Not that I disagree with the, with what you're trying to do, but is this the right funding source? And I think I've come full circle on this one, because I think what it's about is impact and broad impact. That, you know, being able to pay for someone to go into rehabilitation through the funds that have been made available to the town, you know, that is two to three people at most, and then the funds are exhausted. Whereas this has broad impact on so many members of our community that it's something that I can support. But I do have just a couple of specific questions related to the funding. So you mentioned that the full cost is $79,032. Where, if that is approved at special town meeting, when will that funding be exhausted? Is that the end of the fiscal year, or is that the calculation for a full year?
We're, we would say that's the calculation for the full year from January 1st is what we're looking at to implement the program. Granted, that is all dependent on whether the clinician can be provided at that time. All the MOUs are signed, and the, we have to put a policy in place, obviously, because of what we're dealing with. And as long as everything logistically fits in, we would look at a January 1st start, and that funding is to run to December 31st.
And am I clear in understanding that this is in addition to the current staffing numbers of the police department, not in lieu of?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then what I think I heard you mention was after this funding ends, that what you're looking to do is partner, well, first, I think the partnership with Lancaster is a great idea. But it sounds like what you said is that you're applying for a $200,000 grant through Department of Public Health or Mental Health?
Mental Health, yes.
And that would help provide funding for future years, and that is a rolling grant?
Correct.
Okay. And so that way, there is a way for us to get this program going for at least the foreseeable future without it being part of our standing operating budget?
And, yes, it is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Lemmester has already received the grants for.
There's, there's a host of communities around here, but Lemmester right now has a grant that funds a clinician and, and funds this program. Lemmester, obviously, is a bigger community, so they have a bigger need. So when DMH looks at the communities and calls for service and everything else like that, a small community like us, they would look for us to partner with someone. Whereas, if we were to partner with a place like Pittsburgh or Lemmester, we'd obviously get overwhelmed, and we wouldn't get any, any use of the clinician. So they want you to partner with a, a, a close community that, that's similar in size and call volume in Lancaster. We share a dispatch center, so it's, it's actually the perfect fit for us.
And am I correct in understanding that this clinician would be available to members of the public in terms of people who are looking for resources but aren't necessarily in a crisis that requires immediate police intervention?
Absolutely, we, we are gonna require, well, and I think Open Sky pushes this also as a follow-up resources. And I, and I think once the community understands that we have this resource available, I think those people in need are gonna come out and, and seek this assistance. You know, and I think we had talked before, you know, part of this is, people aren't knocking down our doors for our assistance. They see this uniform, that's not what they're gonna do. When we meet people that are at their, at their very end, it's they're in crisis when we have to deal with this. It's very rare that somebody will come in and say, chief, I have an addiction, I need help, right? We don't see that, you know? This is a way to let the community know that we have a soft approach that they can come see us, and we will get you to help. You know, and people have to know that regardless. And e, even if we don't get this clinician right away, and I wanna make sure that message is out there, is that if somebody's in trouble, come see us. Call us, or message me, or message Officer McNamara or somebody, we're here to help you. I mean, this is, this is an awful disease, whether it's mental health illness or, or some type of substance use disorder, it's awful. And no family member should have to deal with this. I've had friends, I've had people that I know that have suffered from this, and, you know, we need to do something. The system's broken. Anecdotally, too, one of the big, another big benefit that I see for this is my own officer wellness. Every one of our officers can use this clinician, whether it's a, my, one of my officers in town, trooper, or whatever it is. It's our own mental health wellness also. Officers go through a lot of stress, and you mentioned it earlier, with, with, what we see on a regular basis and how we're viewed with police reform and all the negative press, don't kid yourself, it takes, it takes its toll. And I care about my officers, and I want them to be well, and this is just another avenue that they can, they can use.
All right, I wanna monopolize our time here, I wanna turn to other members for any questions or comments that they may have.
Let me start. I just have a few questions. One, just to clarify, the $79,000 is Lunenburg's half, or is that?
That's the whole.
That's the whole, so it's actually half of that that you'd be looking for, okay. And the grant that Officer McNamara applied for, that's being split also with Lancaster?
I will let him speak to that.
Are we partnering, partnering with them for the grant?
So we would partner with Lancaster, and we would write the grant essentially for $200,000. And that would be the, the cost to both communities. So it would cover both towns, so it would cover the clinician, and it would cover, you know, other things, as far as CIT training, you know, other associated costs with it, that would, that would take care of it.
When do you expect to hear, do you know?
I'm doing my best to work overtime and get this grant finished.
Okay.
And then I talk to the, the woman from DMH probably weekly about this. So she told me as soon as I get it submitted, four to six weeks.
Oh, wow.
So it, it's rolling, it's, now, it's the state, you never know. That was, that was what she had.
Faster than I expected.
That's what she had told me when I, when I spoke with her a week ago.
Okay. And I think I heard the chief speak to this, but this clinician would also be available for not substance abuse or addiction-related, but suicide prevention types of?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And when the clinician is not on a call, so they, they're riding along or whatever, do they do follow-up on people?
Yes.
Okay, so there is some follow-up?
So, yeah, so they would come, they would come in, they would look at the logs, they would see what's going through, and then they would, hey, listen, this needs to be followed up, or if an officer has a call, they can refer to that clinician. And then the clinician would be in the cruiser, taking calls with the officer, working with a list of follow-up things that they have to do. And they'd be with the CIT officer or something like that, and their job would be like, hey, we have some downtime, okay, we're gonna go to this follow-up. And obviously, if a call comes in, hey, we'll be back, we have to take that. You know, it's a, a, a more pressing, like, let's say, a suicide threat or something like that, they, they peel off and then they come back.
Officer McNamara, if you wouldn't mind, while you're giving answers, is stepping like a foot to your left?
Oh, sorry.
The microphone captures.
Sorry, sorry.
Uh, thanks, that's, that's all I have, thanks.
Just a couple, so I, I, I wanna know how this program would be triggered. When, when the presentation started, it sounded like right now the police department gets a call, and that, as the chief said, you guys aren't trained in this kind of intervention, but it was triggered by a call. Then when the chair said, could somebody seek these services out specifically? That can trigger them as well, is, did I miss that, or is everything triggered by a police call?
It's both, so you can call and ask for help.
Okay.
We could look at the log and see, hey, we need to do a follow-up on this, or we get a police call and the clinician's with us and responds to that call. So if you ask for help, then, then they'll, they'll help you. If you need help and you call the police for help, they'll be there to help.
Okay, I'm, I'm a little concerned about offering it as like a blanket, okay, this clinician is now ready because you may get overloaded. If we have a resource shortage already in the industry, and all of a sudden, you put somebody on, from my initial understanding was, hey, we want somebody to accompany the, the officer, the responding officer to something with somebody who's more trained for that, that's one thing. To say that now it's an open service leads it open to way more resource demand potentially, and that's my concern.
I, yes, but I, I wouldn't wanna shut that off.
Okay.
Because we can follow up. You know, if the, if we're, if we're not in crisis mode, if the, if the clinician is not going crisis, 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 right? There is some periods in between where we can follow up, and it could be just a matter of talking to somebody. That somebody that has that ability, that professional status that could get them the resources. Even if it's a five-minute conversation, saying, okay, let's get you to this resource here, let's get you over to Community Health Inc. in Lemmester. They have a facility on Spruce Street, we can drop you there and get you the services you need. So, will it open up the door? Maybe, but I wouldn't want it.
I bring it up just as something to safeguard against them, to have boundaries so that that doesn't happen. I'm not saying it will happen, maybe it won't.
They wouldn't be doing like in-home therapy sessions, it would be like, hey, here's a resource, we'll, we'll talk you through, get you de-escalated, find out what you need, we'll evaluate you, and then we'll connect you with a service provider for long-term care.
Okay, fair enough. I just wrote a note for myself also that, you know, I'm glad it's being shared with Lancaster. I, as one member of the board, I think that's A, excellent, but B, I would also probably tie the money that, you know, the money would be released if, they would have to agree to this, so that, just one single point. My other thing is, is follow-up, so again, going back to, there's very few facilities in this region, as the chief said. So if we are going to say, okay, here we have a clinician that goes with, either, a person who in need gets the service, whether it's through a police call or through another call, and then they're going to follow up with them, I mean, again, the demand is already overwhelming because we don't have enough resources already. And I'm just concerned that where, like, if, if, if the clinician intervenes, if that person isn't the one to follow up, then who are they helping these people follow up with if there's lack of services? That's not a question I think you're gonna answer, it's just a concern I have.
And I, and I, it's, it's, it's a really good question, but one of the things I can say is they have the ability to speak to a physician, a psychiatrist, that's on staff with Open Sky, which we don't have that luxury.
I will close by saying that, you know, I, I kind of went in the reverse order, the reverse trail of, of the chair, who came full circle and says he's behind with, with the funding source, and it's just, I wanna be clear, I am for the program, okay? I don't think the opium settlement money is where to go. I think where the money to go is, where to get the money from, is from ARPA, which is much more directed toward mental health because of due to the pandemic, and I think we see more increases of that, although your numbers are promising that the numbers are going down. I realize we're not at the end of the year, and now we have, you know, whatever they call it.
Turning my radio off.
Now we have seasonal, seasonal, you know, depression, depression disorder, so who knows? But I think the money would be better sourced from there. Either way, I'm, I'm for getting the money, I just don't know that the opioid, I think that's more directed.
So if I could just make one comment to that, to try to change your mind on that, that thought process, is remember, like, when somebody's suffering from substance use, a major. a majority, well, I shouldn't say majority of the time, often, there's co-occurrence events. That means there's mental health issues. That money, when we, when we applied for that money, when that lawsuit was going through, that was unrestricted money. This is inappropriate use for it. I, I think it's a very good use for it, and it's going to develop. And it, it's going to develop into a program that's going to help all. And, and that, I think that's the way we have to address it.
Well, take my words as, it's, my words are not an obstacle to getting it approved. It's more of a preference.
And I, I just want to make sure that, you know, I try to, to relay that.
Thank you. I thank you both for bringing it forward.
Yep. Thank you both for the presentation. So I've been a true believer in the co-response model for a while now. I watch a lot of cop videos, and maybe that's funny, but it's also really insightful, especially to someone who isn't a cop or a first responder. You know, the mental health crisis in America is truly shocking, and you cannot separate substance abuse from mental health issues. You just can't. And that's on the response side and also the prevention side. So I'm glad the chair's come full circle to realizing that. Now, Mr. Alonso seems to not fully see it. But my mom's actually a substance abuse counselor in New Hampshire, and I asked her about this, and she told me that you can't address the substance abuse side of it without addressing the mental health side of it. They're the same thing, effectively. So I, I have a couple of questions, but first I want to share a set of principles that I found from a coalition of about 30 different organizations that put together principles for us to, you know, utilize and to refer to as we decide as a community how we want to spend this money. And they're organizations in the medical field, mental health, and also activist organizations. So these are the professionals who know the most about the opioid epidemic, which is, you know, where this settlement money's coming from, but also the families who have been mostly impacted by it. So the first principle that they think we should use in determining how this money is spent is to spend the money to save lives. The second is to use evidence to guide the spending. The third is to invest in youth prevention. The fourth is to focus on racial equity, and the fifth is to develop fair and transparent processes of deciding where to spend the funding. So I share that also for the entire community, because ultimately, this is going to be decided at town meeting. So, a couple of questions. So you've shared some of the statistics that I wanted to ask about, and I just want to go find it again. So you responded to five overdoses last year, or seven in total, including this year, since last year?
Correct.
Okay. I don't remember that statistic you shared about the number of calls you've had since Friday, but it sounded like it's going up, not down. I'm addressing Mr. Alonso's comment. He said it was going down, but that wasn't the impression I had from the presentation.
Until the statistics are done for the year, yes, we are going down at this point. But that's, we're not done here. We've had nine calls since Friday. I, I just, I mean, that's a lot. For a community our size, that's a lot to deal with. Two of them involved suicide threats that involved alcohol. Alcohol's a substance use disorder, or a substance use issue that we have to deal with. So it's not just on the side of opioids, or on the side of narcotics, or the side of drugs. You have alcohol issues that we have to deal with. The numbers of overdoses, yes, they're, they're, seem to be lower, and I, and I preface that because we're not always aware if somebody overdoses in a home and they're given Narcan. From a family member that already is aware that this person has an issue, right? Sometimes they don't call us. We get the calls when that person is in crisis and is not responding, and then we get involved, and the medics get involved. So, not off, and the SIMS program works really well. It's a management system that we use throughout central mass communities that reports overdoses, whether it's fatal or non-fatal, that come to us. But again, it's only as good as what that victim reports, or that information that the officers get.
Do officers carry Narcan?
Yes, we do.
You do? Okay. How long have you been using, using it for?
It's been a while. It's, geez.
Since I got to the school, so at least since 2018.
I was going to say, at least, I was going to say it's at least six or seven years.
Might even be more than that.
Six or seven. I remember the previous chief was a big proponent for them to carry it. So how long have you been chief now?
Three, four, three.
I think it's about four before, yeah. So I think it's about six or seven.
I was a sergeant when we first started using that.
So that's definitely the best tool to respond to opioid overdoses. Now, on the prevention side, do you think that having the clinician respond to calls with you guys is the best way to prevent any sort of substance abuse issue getting to that point? Because it could then get them into some sort of treatment program?
I, I think it's a reaction, more than a prevention.
Okay.
Prevention is what Brad does in schools, like education, trying to get people away from those, from those drugs, or from those, you know, those temptations, try to keep them away from that. That's prevention. What we're doing is reacting. Does this have to grow? All day long, right? This is just the start.
I agree with that. I do also see having a clinician with you guys as part of prevention, too, because it's a way to intervene before it gets to the point where you're responding to overdoses. So, you know, I think it's part of that. Are there any other things that you think we could be doing with this money in terms of prevention?
Absolutely. Education programs in schools, even in the adult community. We could use it for that type of program also. You know, it's tough because it's a limited amount of money, and as you know, we're talking about the cost of clinicians right now, right? Those programs start becoming pricey. How often do you want to have them? How often do you need them? Can't start it and not finish it, right? You know, you want to keep this going. And again, it's, it's like I said at the beginning, I, I don't want this to be a flash in the pan where we just start this and, and we get all this celebration, and then we stop. That's not the, the idea about this, is to keep it going. The same thing with education and using that money for education. If we only have enough money to fund one resource educationally, I don't think it works, right? You've got to continue that path. You can't be just one and done, and, you know, and say that's it. And, you know, you know, we've cured everything. That's, that's, nah, we've got to continue the fight.
Well, I agree. I think it's a great program. Hope it happens, and I hope it is able to continue to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The advantage of going last. I had a half a dozen questions. My colleagues raised all of them, and you answered them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So one of the things that the select board has to decide tonight is if we're going to include this in the warrant. And so this is, right now, being proposed as Article D. So I will entertain this motion now.
I would entertain a motion that we included in the warrant.
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? If some of you are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. All right, the motion passes, as we'll be on the warrant.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hesitate to bring this up. I just looked at the article. It says 80,000?
Instead of 79.
Instead of half.
Well, they're the, yeah, there's.
Lancaster's going to reimburse. Okay.
So we're paying for the whole thing.
Good, good night.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure it was all.
All right. So we're running a little bit late. So we're meeting with Agricultural Commission. This is with regards to Article M. This is with Jennifer Duffy. Mr. Allison, are you taking this for Jennifer? Would you mind coming to the podium, stating your name and address, and then just briefly overviewing this article? And this is presented to us tonight as Article M in our drive. Mr. Allison?
Good evening. Matthew Allison, 188 Flat Hill. I'm also the chair of the Agricultural Commission. This article is the second time we've tried it. We had recent discussions with town council, and town council confirmed that this is, in fact, within the exemption for farming in the state laws, so that our bylaw is effectively not enforceable, per se. So the three revisions of the farm size, referencing the, I believe it's Chapter 48, Section 3, whatever it references, that, that is enforceable. So if someone wanted to challenge our bylaw, then it would not, we would not prevail. The applicant would. So it's basically just cleaning it up. And this, this is, if you want some history on it, I believe it's from the Farm Bill of 2016, where they reduced the requirement of acreage for farm from, from five acres down to as little as two acres with additional income requirements. And this is in response to a loss of our farming land and the movement towards sort of microfarming, doing, doing more with less. And White Mars Farm on Page Street, they are a perfect example of this. They had, they got an NRCS permit and clearcut a couple acres of land in residential area, and that was, to the best of my knowledge, the first reclamation of transformation from residential to agriculture. So that was a, that was a win for the community, and they've done, they've done wonderful in this community for the last three years or more. And basically, I just, the, the drive here is to not discourage people with faulty language in our bylaw.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Allison. Do we have any questions from the board, or comments?
Having read through this, I see no issues with this.
I will ask one question, if I may.
Of course.
So do you happen to know, Mr. Allison, what the, if you go down to two acres, what are the qualifications on the national law chapter 48, Section 3? Do you happen to know what that is?
I believe it's a minimum of $1,000 per acre.
Okay. Of production. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All right. My understanding is that town council assisted with the, with the wording here.
That's correct.
To make sure it's fully compliant. This is also an article that we have, the select board has to accept. So is there a motion to add Article M to the warrant?
I move to add Article M to the warrant.
Any additional discussion? If some of you are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Oh, I do see a question or comment, but I'll finish the statement. The motion passes. And we do have a comment from Mr. Byrne.
Would you also make a motion to refer it to the planning board for hearing, which is an obligation for zoning board, for zoning articles? Please and thank you.
So to rescind our previous?
No, no, you, you've, you've put it on the warrant, but now you need to refer it to the planning board for a public hearing prior to the town meeting.
I move to, I move to refer Article M to the planning board for a public hearing consisting with our zoning bylaw and practices.
Second.
Any additional discussion? If some of you are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passed. I see two members from the planning board here, so I'm trusting that that will, that will make it.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
All right.
And I would also like to mention that, that I was going to mention that the planning board has, the membership has agreed to have the hearing for this, because the Agricultural Commission does not have capacity for that. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. All right. Next, we have a, not as late. So we have a meeting with, with the Land Use Director regarding warrant articles for the planning board, and you guys have a couple of them.
A through C, correct.
I think you guys started N.
Yeah.
If I'm correct. And you have N and O. Is that right?
N, O, P, Q.
N, O, P, Q.
P, Q?
Well, so in your draft, Q should be P, and R should be Q. So, when it was revised.
E, I, E, I, O?
It's come with a decoder ring or something? What, R should be Q?
Did you drink enough Ovaltine?
I think we're just starting with N. I think that's where it begins.
We're starting with N.
Which is?
O, Q, and R.
This is the off-street parking.
Okay.
So, Adam Byrne, Land Use Director, excuse me. Currently, Section 6.4C 5K of the zoning bylaw is common driveways. The planning board, over the past several years, has heard more and more petitions for common driveways. The, the current language by right allows two lots to share a common driveway as long as it splits the lot line between the two. Fairly simple, conceptually. In practice, it tends to be much more complicated, and there's language that allows the zone, the planning board and the building commissioner to independently make a determination that an alternative location is okay, essentially. It's not a permit, it's not, there's no real language or process, it's just a determination. So folks come to the planning board, and sometimes it's easy, and the planning board says, yes, this makes total sense. You're splitting a lot off your existing house, and you want to use the existing driveway. People know where it is, there's a curve in the road, why not? Other times, it's more complicated, and we end up with some fairly ridiculously shaped lots. There's a lot that I can think of that, one is shaped like a J that sits around the lot in front of it, so they could put the common driveway through the frontage, but the driveway then cuts off a square that's surrounded by the other lot from the house. So it gets into this really weird space of, we're making weird lots, for probably not good reasons. And secondly, the, the purpose behind common driveways is often to reduce pavement, to reduce interactions between driveways and roadways. It's safer, it's a little more predictable. So the planning board said, we don't have any real standards, we want to formalize this a little bit more, and we want to maybe permit a little bit larger development on a common driveway, but we also want to get our hands around how folks submit for it and what the process is. So they've introduced this language that you have in front of you on the warrant, and the intent would be to separate it out from Section 6.4C 5 and make it its own Section 6.4C 7. It would allow for four common, for four lots to share a singular driveway, as long as all of those lots front on the road that the driveway intersects with. So we're not allowing people to develop land that would otherwise be undevelopable. And it allow, it creates a special permit process for these common driveways. So it makes it a subjective process that the board will review under their special permit standards and under their rules and regulations for special permits and site plan approval, and it clarifies what the submission requirements would be, what the timeframes are, and it gives them the ability to condition these common driveways. It does take into account public safety. We spoke with the fire chief about requirements he would look for. There are requirements in here, which you'll see, for signs at the end of the driveway showing the layout and number location, as well as numerical signs at each of the branches for the house that would be located there. It also codifies commercial common driveways, which we don't currently permit, although they kind of exist in a few different places. And this is something that DOT is highly in favor of and has pushed other communities to sort of introduce. We only have one state-controlled route, it is our major commercial route, but we also have a locally controlled numbered route that is where our other significant commercial areas are. So this permits up to six commercial driveways in areas that have public water, and four in areas that don't. The unwatered areas, or the unpublic watered areas, there's a maximum length of 1,200 feet, goes up to 1,600 feet in areas where there is public water, and that allows for a little bit more control over how far apparatus would have to go, and how far fire hose would have to be pulled, and those sorts of fun experiments that you get into when you have common driveways. I mean, I could read it all to you, but I'll have it in front of you, and
Yep.
I hope that was comprehensive enough.
I think that was a good overview. Do you have any questions from the board?
Yeah, I mean, this is just getting, I mean, probably, this is more of a curiosity. It's getting pretty into the weeds. But that 1,200 feet, is that the maximum for the for the distance from the street to, to the full length down any one branch or an aggregate?
That would be my interpretation.
Okay, okay.
So I'll, I have a question about, um, so in looking at this, one of the, one of the notes says a common driveway would not, will not, and this, I'm looking in, uh, B three. It says a common driveway would not be used to provide lot frontage required by this bylaw or by the subdivision control law.
That's correct.
My understanding is, um, current lots in most residential districts now require a hundred feet of frontage. Is that right?
Uh, or fifty with twice the required lot size.
Okay. So assuming then that there's four hundred feet of frontage on a road.
Mm-hmm.
Help me understand why there would be a common driveway.
Well, it, it does reduce development cost. It depends on the interaction of the road. If it's a, if it's a straight road, maybe that's easy and there's no need to have a common driveway. If it's a curvy hilly road, which maybe we have a few of, and where each of those individual driveways would be, end up being seventy-five or a hundred feet apart and there's horizontal, horizontal and vertical curves, maybe you don't want four driveways in that area. And it seems that it would be unwise or unsafe or safer to have a singular driveway.
Did you guys do a, um, like a lot review to identify which lots or current parcels this would even apply to?
We didn't. Um, and it, it doesn't require you to use it for four lots. You could use it for two. Um, and we have a lot, lot of common driveways that come through. We have a lot of folks who have large lots who in the past years have been dividing them. And often they want to use their existing driveway, um, for a variety of reasons. They don't have to try and figure out how to put another driveway in. They have an area where they could easily branch off. Um, their house is currently situated. They want to go up past their house so they can branch off and just keep going. People know the driveway is there. Um, and it, you know, it's already established. The less pavement we add, the better off we are in the long term, um, both from stormwater management, but from heat islands and, and deforestation and all of those good things as well. Um, I think this would be a boon on our scenic roads, less intrusion on stone walls, less removal of trees. And there's some thought and, and energy at the planning board level to look at expanding the amount of scenic roads, um, potentially making most roads scenic, uh, and introducing a scenic road bylaw that would have a little more teeth and a little more control over what and how the, that's enforced.
So super curvy roads or intersections basically is how you would achieve the frontage required, uh, for four parcels to hit this kind of frontage, to even need a common driveway.
Well, I think need is a really big, a really big reach.
Ignore the word need.
Desire is, you know, and, and, and some folks like privacy and they want the common driveway. They want the idea of, well, you can't see my house from the road. And in order to get there, it's exclusive. You need to, you know, go down this nice tree-lined driveway that, that we, we maintain and we own and is ours. Um, and some people don't want to do that. Uh, some developers would find it as something that they would like to do. Um, in the instances of, um, you know, we'll use four because that's the maximum, but if you have, if you're in a residence B or an outlying area, you're in eighty thousand square foot lots. If you have four hundred feet of frontage and you have eighty thousand square foot lots, um, then you're going to be disturbing more than an acre almost immediately after you dib into your second lot. So you're going to trigger stormwater management. Stormwater management, as we'll hear or you'll hear in a few weeks, is a big deal. And the way that they've done it traditionally with A and R lots is, um, rain gardens and pea stone diaphragms next to the driveway. And from an engineering perspective, that works and it calks out, but each of those individual homeowners becomes responsible for it. You make a common driveway, uh, this bylaw requires that there's access maintenance and utility easements along the common driveway. So all of a sudden, your biggest stormwater producer, the driveway, now has the stormwater management inclusive in the easement. You get four folks who, four property owners who are now responsible for the maintenance collectively. So there's a check and balance there, uh, as opposed to individuals who, there is a check and balance there, but maybe it, it's a little easier to manage that stormwater on a singular driveway.
I follow.
So I, it, it's not to increase or promote development, but it's to give people an alternative manner of development that they're already partaking in, but in a really kind of ham-fisted way.
Okay. Do you have any other comments, questions from the board?
It all seems well thought out and it sounds very reasonable to me and I'm glad we're coming to that because I know the existing one has had its challenges.
That's an understatement.
Um, all right. This is Article N. Is there a motion to accept into the warrant?
I move to accept Article N and to include it in the warrant.
Second.
Any additional discussion? As many as are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Uh, the motion passes unanimously. All right. We're going to go to O. And just so you know, when we get to what's called Q, we're going to call it tonight, uh, P. And when we get to what's called R, we're going to call it Q. Okay?
I really thought that we only had three at this point.
No.
Well, we'll hit them all.
Well, I mean, three of them kind of go together.
So O is, uh, solar parking canopy.
So there's two solar parking lot canopies and then there's one for the solar bylaw. They're all part and parcel of a singular thought. And if the warrant isn't printed, we could talk about combining them into a singular article.
The warrant's not printed.
Um, the board was in favor of that as long as council felt that it was reasonable and that if someone wanted to delete one of the sections it might be permitted in, that they could do that. And I said, I'm, don't, that would be the scope of the article and it would only be the things that were printed that would be within that scope, is my layperson's understanding of how that works.
Council consolidated, uh, two of the three.
Okay.
Um, with the ones that had almost identical, the ones where I thought they were the same.
And that's, and then, and the board is fine with leaving the other as separate as well. So solar parking lot canopy. Uh, if you don't know what these are, go to REI or the junkyard down on seventy, I'm sorry, the car reclamation center. Um, it's a steel structure, about eighteen feet tall with solar panels on it. It's essentially covered parking that generates electricity. Currently, this wouldn't be allowed in Lunenburg because anything over ten KW of production is considered a large-scale ground-mounted solar and you need a two-hundred-foot offset from the property lines. You need twenty acres of land and it's really a chore to get any of that done. And the number of parcels where it would be applicable is really limited. Um, with the American Reinvestment Act, is that what it is?
The Inflation Reduction.
Inflation Reduction Act. I knew there was lots of letters in it and they were do, reducing something. Um, there is money for business to invest in green energy and carbon reduction. So the planning board felt that we have several locations, uh, the warehouse at four seventy-five Lemonster Shirley Road, Walmart in Hanaford, and, you know, maybe some of the smaller businesses around that may wish to pursue some of that funding and install solar canopy to reduce their unitill liability, um, provide areas of parking that is covered for their customers and just do a generally good, happy thing for the environment. Um, so we came up with solar parking lot canopy as an accessory use in the commercial industrial area. Um, so four, five, A, six is where it would allow that in the commercial and four, six, A, four? Is it four or five? I, I only brought one with me because I was really worried about the language, but is where it would be in the commercial industrial. So this would allow for folks to install them based on the standards outlined in the bylaw and they would meet standard structure setbacks. You would need to screen with natural vegetation, the, um, associated cabinets and equipment, and you'd need to make sure that essentially you're not harming the drainage patterns with the installation. Um, there's an exorbitant cost to installing these compared to, say, a greenfield solar because the racking is more structural and requires footing and all that kind of fun stuff. Uh, but I think there are opportunities where this could be something people would, would pursue and take advantage of.
Okay. I think the key things that I noticed, um, were, uh, in, in section D, about a minimum of five percent of parking spaces in the lot will have universal charging facilities. Um, and, uh, and then brand-specific charging facilities are allowed only when they're in addition to the minimum number of universal chargers, which I know Tesla's pretty brand-specific. And then a minimum of ten percent of each type of EV charging spaces must be accessible and comply with the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board regulations.
Correct.
And I am aware that there's also additional funding provided by the state for businesses that look to install EV chargers.
That's correct.
So I think that this, uh, my opinion is I think this is really helpful, um, to, you know, meeting this green future that we're all desiring. It provides a second source of revenue for businesses. Um, you know, it certainly reduces the heat signature of the impervious surfaces that these are on top of. Um, and then also helps people like me who hate having cars that get super hot when you go in the store, uh, so you don't have to keep searching for.
Or super snowy.
Yeah, yeah. You don't have to keep searching for the, uh, the spot that, um, that shaded. But that does get me to my last question, which was in the snow. So in here you note a height of twenty feet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, now my question is plow vehicles and the ones that are used in these large parking lots, um, do we have confirmation that these vehicles are less than twenty feet?
I don't think I could speak for everyone, but I would say in general, they're going to be less than twenty feet.
All right. I don't know the typical height of a, of a plow truck.
Well, I kind of go by railroad bridges and most of them are fifteen to eighteen feet. So we're not constantly seeing dump trucks jammed under railroad bridges unless you live in Westboro, um, but that one's only like twelve feet.
Ouch.
No, there's one, there's one specific bridge that is like a bane to anyone who drives through Westboro and it connects one side of Westboro to the other.
Yep. All right. So you're not envisioning then that a, that a, I mean, loaders, I'm assuming, are more than twenty feet off the ground.
Maybe with the bucket all the way up, but, you know, if you're, if, if we're in a snow event where they're having to bring a loader in to move piles of snow, they're probably not going to be under the canopies. They're going to be off to the sides and they're going to be, you know, they'll be using the smaller plow trucks to move the snow and then the loader will come in and scoop everything up and get rid of it.
This twenty feet is maximum.
That's right.
Is there no minimum?
That's, that's what I was going to ask. The same as that question.
Yeah, is there a minimum?
The maximum is twenty feet.
Correct.
So if you tilting the panels to get the sun, the maximum is going to be a whole lot higher than the underpass would be. You're not saying that the.
They are, they are, I mean.
They are. I, you know, this is, this is language, some of this that I've taken from other places, especially the maximum height.
Just might want to consider that, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah. Um, and I've seen these in practice all over the place, uh, and I don't know that I've ever noticed them being an issue.
I'm just wondering if you need to indicate a minimum height. An SUV pulls in with a car top carrier on it.
I would.
I don't know what, I've been to, I've seen RVIs. I don't know, like there you pull in with a kayak on top.
Yeah. Uh, you know, I'm hesitant to put a minimum because people are going, you know, it's sort of like a parking garage, you know? You go to some of the parking garages and they have, if it's low.
People scrape the top of the.
They, they do.
They don't read the heights. They don't know how tall the vehicle is. They storeo it.
Um, so I mean, we can, we, I can certainly bring that to the planning board as a note for their public hearing.
Yeah. I mean, it's not, I'm trying to think through the process by which we can, you guys can submit a revision for.
Well, I mean, they, they, they can make note of it at the public hearing and it can be a floor amendment. It's not, um, it's not unheard of or uncommon.
I think we may want to take a look at, um, you know, with some of the larger lots, typically they do have larger pieces of equipment plowing them. It's not always the two fifty or the three fifties.
Yeah, but I, I think even if you get into a ten-wheel, you're, you're not over twenty feet. So it would, it would, you know, you'd want to be, have a, have clearance for a ten-wheel. So maybe it's sixteen feet and you just figure the pitch out over that.
Well, I just don't want to find ourselves in a situation where, you know, people on vacation coming to a house on a lake or something, not that Lunenburg.
Not an Airbnb though.
Not an Airbnb, uh, coming to visit family, you know, coming from out of town for a summer reunion or something.
Sure.
They have those, whatever they're called, that sit on top of the cars and then someone has their canopy towed. I think it would be helpful language to put in, um, some kind of, um, height minimum.
Sure. And I'll note two things on this. Um, there is an agreement amongst the major manufacturers to move to a universal charging standard, including Tesla.
Oh, really?
Because, yeah, they were finding that there was too much conflict and so they're going to move to the standard and Tesla will just charge non-Tesla owners twice as much for their charge. Um, and I'll just sort of fold in whatever, I think it's probably R at this point, the alteration to the solar bylaw is a clause to a definition. So the definition of large-scale ground-mounted says anything greater than ten KW is considered large-scale ground-mounted. Um, and the board added with the exception of parking lot solar canopies as defined and reversed back. And that way the, the, the thinking there was the solar bylaw is a third rail and has been since two thousand and ten. Without having significant time to really sit down and parse that apart, they didn't want to open too much up into it and they thought that, that altering that definition made the most sense to achieve this in expeditious fashion.
Any other comments on?
I have one other comment. Um, I didn't notice it here. Have you, um, thought about including something around, um, handicap spaces, extra wide spaces and?
Uh, under D, it does require them for the charging stations and you can't do parking without meeting AAB requirements. So like.
That's just implicit. You don't need to call it out.
Yeah. No, it's, it's implicit that if you have a parking lot, you have to meet the minimum standards of the AAB.
Even if only part of the lot has the solar?
Oh, you're saying should, requiring some of them to be under the canopy?
Under the canopy should include some.
Uh, so that would be challenging. Um, and, and this is the fun of AAB is the requirement is that the space be located as close to the accessible path as possible. And the accessible path does not necessarily equate to closest to the door or where they've decided to install the solar canopy. So there could be specific reasons they wouldn't install the solar canopy adjacent to AAB spaces. Um, perhaps the excavation for the foundation would change the grade and put them out of compliance. And then they get into a complete parking lot redesign, which then impacts stormwater and so these become unfinancially feasible, um, or financially unfeasible, I guess is the proper way to say it. Uh, so I, it, it's, it's tough, I think, to, to require that.
I, I want to, do want to add on to that though, just, just to drill down on a little bit more. I, I imagine that you meet ADA requirements as long as the lot overall has spaces accessible to the thing.
Correct.
So you, could you not have additional handicap spaces under the canopy that by themselves wouldn't otherwise meet that overall spaces near the building requirement? But in other words, you're giving people more options. You're giving handy, uh, people that have.
But I don't think that, so yes, you can, if you, if you have a hundred spaces and you're required to have three accessible spaces. and one of them is a van space, can you have 12? Sure, as long as you have the 100 that you need for zoning. I guess what I'm saying is if you designate it as an AAB space, it needs to meet all the requirements. It needs to have the width, it needs to have the landing area, it needs to have the accessible path. So if you designate an AAB space and the path from that space to the front door exceeds 2% grade, you don't have an AAB space and you can't paint it the way that you would see it painted. So requiring them under here, you might, obviously we can do whatever we want, we have home rule. We can say you have to put 50 of them in. But it doesn't mean that it would permit someone to actually install them to the required standards in conjunction with the canopies. It's not saying that they, I, I, I'm not saying that it would be impossible and that they won't do it. I just, I don't want to require it and have it be the thing that prevents someone from doing it.
Yeah, understood, yeah. Your explanation makes complete sense, where I was coming from, the spirit of where I was coming from is.
Yeah.
You give people a choice. I'd rather, I have a space that I can park in that's not covered 20 feet from the building or one that's 75 feet from the building, but it is covered.
And I would expect if someone's going to put these up, they're probably going to put them up over most of the parking lot. And they will figure out how to make those grades work. But I wouldn't want to force the hand, like Walmart, they wouldn't have an issue, they would just figure it out. Because that makes sense to them. You know, Joe's Clam Shack, who is like, look, I can get them, I can afford them, but I can't afford to do any more real reclamation to the property. And now you're forcing me to do that, I can't get them now. That, so that's the balance is mega corporation, probably not a problem, local or regional, mom and pop, much more challenging.
Understood.
All right, I think it's pretty straightforward. I mean, I could ask you some questions about I, but I think I can probably just give you a call. Instead of taking up more time this evening on this.
Also, as long as you are going to do a revision. I just happened to notice something that in the preamble, line three, by added there to, I think you mean to say by adding there to.
Oh, oh, in the article?
Yes, preamble to the article, yep. Respectively by adding there to new sections 250.
Oh, I don't have, I, I have what I sent in. So that's, that's the town manager's revision at this point.
Oh, okay.
Town councils.
Or councils, one of the, I meant your revision that since you're the one printing it.
It's her, it's him, it's her.
You know, Adam, I.
Usually we go with what town council.
Yeah.
I think I will ask a question about I. You know, one of the things is, you know, when you, when we do escalators for, for, so I covers what's in the general solar bylaw about having to do sureties for the removal of the items, if the town needs to remove them. And I think as consistent with the solar bylaws, 120, up to 125%. My question is on the last sentence. The amount shall include a mechanism for calculating increased removal cost due to inflation. Now you go to a vendor and you say, how much is it going to cost? It's going to give you a 2% escalator for the most part. And then you look at contracts, they're going to say 3%. And then we look at even the last three years of inflation and we're already at, you know, 20 something percent. So have you guys taken a look at some of the sureties that you already have? And seeing if they still match what current removal costs would be and if this language is still appropriate? I know it's probably intended to be consistent, but is it still appropriate?
So I think it is still appropriate because it doesn't hit an escalator percentage. And where it's a special permit, it is a negotiation at that point in the special permit process. And I think your point is valid that in a normal, in a normal cycle or previously in a normal cycle, 2 and 3% were probably pretty, pretty standard. And most engineers would say, yeah, that's, that's about material escalation. You know, outside of maybe asphalt here and there when OPEC decided to get a little persnickety about this or that. And oil prices go up and asphalt goes through the roof. But that usually kind of evens itself out. But you're right, over the past, you know, two, three, four years, construction costs specifically have gone bananas. So I would expect that that's something the board would take into account when looking at removal costs. The sort of flip side of that is they're not building, they're actually destroying. So the material cost is less than, there is no material cost, it's, it's labor cost. And so it's, point is taken that labor costs are also escalating. But there's the potential that in the removal, your costs are going to escalate less than if you were needing to repair or construct.
All right, there's always the unknowns. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm in the process of emptying out some units. And I just got quoted from Republic that the cost of a mattress now is $150 per part.
Seven cents.
And I, and I.
What a match costs.
Yeah, so no mattress as far as removing.
Yeah, I know, I.
Oh, yeah. You know, and I got about 30 of these things.
Yeah.
And so, you know.
And there's nothing you can do with them.
And so I guess I'm using that in my head as what happens if we identify like we did with the tube TVs, that there's a part in them that we all, that, that we need to recycle. And so you can't do it for less than 50 bucks.
Sure.
What if we identify that there's some part in these solar panels that needs to be recycled? You know, obviously we can't foresee the unknowns, but I would just encourage that there be some kind of, you know, if there is a revisit of this section, you know, perhaps to make some note, to be consistent at least with the construction price index.
Fair enough.
That's just a comment.
Yep.
I don't have any other questions, anyone from the board have any others? All right, Adam, we're going to get through these last two a little quicker.
I think I just did the second to the last one.
Yeah, I thought, I thought he included one of them already.
Which one we included?
The definition.
Which was Q.
Which was Q, also known as P. All right, so is our motion to accept O and P?
I move to accept O and P, did we say?
Yes.
Yes, and, okay, I was going to say include in the warrant.
All right, and we have a motion, a second and additional discussion, or as many, any additional discussion, I should pause. As many as are interfere with the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. All right, so we have N, O, and P. Now we're getting to Q, which is in our booklet as R.
Which is the showstopper.
Water Supply Protection District.
So we're glutton for punishment and we're back again. So no, the, the Water Supply Protection District bylaw that we have dates back to a DEP model from 1991. And it's now 2023. So we're 32 years late and a whole century passed. So in 2011, DEP issued a new model bylaw for water supply protection. And this is based off of that bylaw. The, so we're looking at deleting the entirety of what exists now as section 254.9.
Can I just get, if I can interrupt, can you just get, put on the front end, what are, what are the residents who live on lakes going to have a problem with? When it comes to this?
I hope nothing.
Okay.
So, and, and that, that's kind of where I was going. The, the big change is zone one is now removed from the bylaw totally. Because zone one is the wellhead protection area, which is 400 foot circumference from the wellhead. In parcels that are owned by the owner of a public well, they have control of that. So they dictate what happens there. DEP has industry over that area as well as far as enforcement and those type of things. And the, in, in the instance of parcels where there is an easement, generally that easement and the owner of the well will govern how that gets meted out. So the town doesn't really have a role in zoning enforcement of those areas because there's already enforcing provisions. So the board felt that it was important to remove, I mean, and I, in, in nine years that I've been here, the board has never done anything and the building commissioner has never done anything with a zone one. So we felt that it was important to just remove that from the potential or from codification because we don't really have a role in it. And then what it does is it brings more contemporary definitions and a lot of them. And looks at how we develop within the zone two. And the existing bylaw requires that at 15% impervious, you can't develop anymore, you're done on a lot. And this allows for development in excess of that with a special permit as long as there's infiltration. So if you're developing more than 15% of any lot in town, you're probably going to end up in a stormwater permit at some point anyway. So you're already doing infiltration because our bylaw, our stormwater bylaw requires that. So it would be a matter of including this. The stormwater bylaw has treatment standards, which are in line with DEP, with EPA's requirements, which all come from the Clean Waters Act. So all of these things play together to allowing for thoughtful, reasonable development in the zone two. And then in the zone three, it's just a requirement for site plan if it's not a, I believe it, if it's not a single or two family home. And most of those developments in the zone three are already getting site planned anyway. So again, it's just a check and balance to ensure that stormwater and impervious areas are being captured, treated and infiltrated. Because all of us wells and public water drink from the same aquifer. It's just one big lake underground that stretches from here to Lancaster and probably into Shirley. So really we're all drinking the same water, it just depends who's putting it in the tap for us. And the idea is that some of our zone twos include areas that are very commercial and very industrial. And any development in those areas would be significantly hampered by a 15% impervious cover. And going beyond that isn't creating a detriment to the aquifer if done in a contextually sensitive way that treats and infiltrates.
Are Keating's piles of rocks considered impervious?
They're preexisting nonconforming.
Love that answer.
No, they're not impervious. So I'm not an engineer, but I know enough to get myself in trouble. Impervious is a curve, it's a coefficient curve. So if you have a forest, you're like at zero. If you have a farm field, you're at like 20. If you have grass, you're at like 30. If you have stone dust and rock, you're at like 75 or 80. If you have blacktop, you're at 100. You know, and I'm sure there's, I'm sure I'm not right with the numbers, but that's kind of how it goes. And so if you, you know, regrinds is everybody's favorite, oh, we'll just do regrinds, it's not pavement, that's like a 93. So it's better, but it's not great. It's certainly cheaper to put down. And it does kind of mash into this pavement like substance. But Keating's stuff is, I mean, they've been there for so long that if they were going to damage the aquifer, they probably would have done it 100 years ago.
All right, so for Keating's, Powell's, Proctor, this is anything?
This isn't going to impact any, anything that currently exists. So zoning is not a retroactive, unlike a general bylaw, which can be retroactive. Once the general bylaw goes into effect, it can, you know, everything is covered under it, zoning, it's only things going forward.
Any questions for the board?
I have, I have one, you said zone one goes away?
Well, the zone one doesn't go away, the zone one never goes away. That it goes away from the zoning bylaw. So we've removed it from the town's, I'll say the town's jurisdiction because I, I don't really, I didn't really think of a better way to say it. Currently it's in our zoning bylaw. So our building commissioner as a zoning enforcement officer could come out and write someone a violation if he thinks in his opinion what they're doing is contrary to what the bylaw permits. That seems like a silly thing for us to worry about. And where zone one is to protect the well. And so if there's an issue where something could potentially be impacting the well, DEP will come out because it's a public water supply and they will do enforcement on that. Or the water district can as the well owner.
So if someone thinks something is being done wrong within a zone one, they would go to DEP?
Correct.
Instead of the town.
And even, I, I've never had anyone come to the town and say, we think this is happening in the zone one. And frankly, we would probably call the water districts and say, hey, what's going on near zone one? And they'd call DEP and it would just be, you know. And I think most people, if they think something's wrong in the zone one, are going to call the water district, not the town.
Has the water district had the opportunity to take a look at this?
They have. They did provide some comments. They had some concerns about the regulator, regulation of zone three. They felt that zone three didn't need to be regulated and that's echoed by DEP by their, they don't include zone three in their bylaw. It just covers zone two. Upon seeing the way that the board addressed zone three, the water district said that they're okay with that. They don't see it as a hindrance or a problem and they would be supportive of it.
All right. I think this is the first time the water department is reviewing, given that that's us, is reviewing it, but, okay.
But you buy your water from someone else, you don't own a well.
No, I buy it from the town.
Well, no, the water department.
Through the water district, not the water department.
Yeah, the water department buys their water from Pittsburgh.
Yes, yes. All right, I don't have any, I was just saying, are there any other questions, comments?
Is this particularly, I just have a question, is this slated to be the last article of the evening?
Well, it can be, we're going to have to push this forward, right? Do you think we'll have quorum as there's going through four planning board articles?
I, I just, I want, I want this to get, as I want all things, okay? In an ideal world, I wish everybody, the majority of people would come to town meeting and would have a say and would stay and be interested. Okay, the reality is that my ideal world doesn't even come close to being existing except in my head.
You could make this article one.
I, that's why I'm asking. This, what is this now? R or P, this is Q, right?
Q.
So Q is, I don't know what letter of the alphabet, like 17 or something. So we're going to ask people on a, on a Tuesday night and the last thing we're going to throw at them is an eight page zoning bylaw, which is going to come up, I'm guessing, at best, at best, nine o'clock at night. That's at best, maybe more like 9:30. I just concerned that the planning board puts all this work into it and it doesn't get the shake that it should. And I don't know if the solution to that is, hey, don't put it on this one, put it on the annual, I don't think it's going to matter. I guess we could take our shot there, but that's my concern.
I think we might, Mr. Alonso, need to, I'll work with the town man, I think we need to modify the order of these. Because, you know, I think your comment and my hunch is that, you know, planning, from my history at town meeting, I don't think that the planning board has ever got all of their articles passed.
Oh, you are incorrect, sir.
Am I? There was one?
I've, I've had several where I got all my articles passed.
I think there have been.
I always feel like there's always one that doesn't, that doesn't make it.
My first town meeting, I spent three hours at the podium.
Yeah.
My concern, my concern with this article is that it's going to have built in potentially opposition.
No.
Potential.
There's definitely.
I think you're being pessimistic.
I think I'm being, I would argue I'm being realistic. And at that night, to get something, as we all know, to, to cause confusion and stir, it's a lot easier than just creating a sense of affirmation.
Yeah, we might need to bump this up in the, in the order because I, I, I think Mr. Alonso's point is well taken. So, yes. So, yes, Mr. Brenner, always. And while you're coming to the podium, I will say that I know the planning board took quite a, that the select board took quite a while to get stolen on the master steering committee, but I'm happy that we finally did. And so, but I hear that there's, there's a concern with quorum, that you guys have a lot of members. And so it's hard to get fifteen people to coordinate schedules.
It's, I suspect there will be some challenges, but that's the price we pay for trying to make sure we get as many voices heard in town and knowing, knowing that one way you hear people's voices is to ask them directly and knowing that that is only so effective. The other way we make sure people's voices are heard is by making sure we have enough representatives of the different sub constituencies within the town at the master planning committee.
A solution could be to decrease your membership size and increase your associate membership size. That way you can always meet your quorum and then you have your optional members who can have some voting authority. But I know we're way off topic here.
That, that was discussed and if, if we need to pivot in the future, that is, it can pivot after that? Yeah, I thought so. But again, the guy, just the goal there was explicitly to make, it's a lot easier for people to understand their voices being heard when they also have a vote at the table. And for something like the master plan, we'd like people to know they're being heard. If we have to pivot, we're going to have to pivot. I should say Matthew Brenner, six nineteen Northfield Road. I am the planning board chair. And I, I just wanted to say that good golly, if this could be earlier in the meeting, would that be wonderful? Because this, I think, I think once people hear about it, they're going to see that that this was really intentionally designed to have something for everybody. But I also think it would benefit the town if this was heard at a time when people's ears are open and maybe not nine-thirty at night when they are going to say no, just to make things end faster. But that is my feedback on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions from the board? Mr. Bernie, thank you. Thank you first for your years of service to our community.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being so thorough in your assistance to the planning board. And I know you put a lot of, I know your effort as a member of this community has been multifold, but heavily on the definitions and adding clarity. And so I know that you're in your last couple of weeks here with us as a staff member. So I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
To our community, to the residents, to the businesses. It's, you know, it's, you know, I don't want to get emotional, but it's, we'll talk, but I just want to thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I would echo that and I would ask, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask one question. Can we talk you out of it?
Probably not.
But you did leave the door open. I just want the.
Probably even a no, Adam.
Probably, probably not.
How much arco money do you have left?
Fifty-eight thousand.
No.
Wow.
One-time bonus.
Thank you for all, I echo the chair's statement. It's been a pleasure working with you over the years and I'm not, not eulogizing you. I just, I don't know the next time this is a public meeting, I want people to know what a pleasure it was to work with you in all capacities. So thank you so much for all you've done.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo that as well from this forum, in this forum, but I will have the pleasure of working with you again on Thursday night, so.
Yes, you will.
Yeah.
I was like, what's Thursday?
The master.
Yes, the steering committee.
I know you specifically asked us not to throw you a going away party.
I did.
All right. So I'm trusting that you'll at least give us the courtesy next week of coming before us. And we'll have it at the beginning of our meeting.
Ooh, Tuesdays are tight.
Bid you farewell.
Yeah, I don't know that I can do that. Because I'm, I'm usually running around picking up children late into the evening.
Well, we'll, we'll figure something out.
Well, I also want to say thank you to Adam. Nine years this September.
Nine years to the, almost to the day next week. I think it was, I think it was the Monday after Columbus Day, or the Tuesday after Columbus Day.
So we, we thank you for all your years of service. You're always a extreme professional in everything you do.
Thank you.
I can't think of a department that doesn't, hasn't worked with you and really is going to miss you being
Thank you.
there and being a great fellow employee.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for everything you've done for the town.
Thank you. And I want to thank you all for, you know, the dedication you show to our town. I mean, I, I do live here and sometimes it's hard to live here and work here and not have Adam come out and not the land use director. And that's, that's been a big, a big choice and a big influence in my choice. So, you know, I, I know how hard you all work and I know you all do it for free, so. You know, that's, that means a lot and it's been a pleasure working for the town. It's been nice to see the town grow and make changes. And I'm not leaving, so we'll continue to see the town grow and change. And maybe one day I'll have a kid who can drive and I'll have a little more time that I can give back some in, in my own free way.
This does give us an opportunity to see what the civic commitment of Adam Bernie, the citizen is. Because I'm going to be looking for you at the town meetings and we'll see.
The Saturday town meetings maybe, the Tuesday town meetings probably not.
Well, I'm still going to look.
We know your important duties, being a dad, being a husband. You have four children and that's a lot of time and work.
It is.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and also don't forget to refer those to the planning board for hearings as well.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that that last one, which I don't think we committed to the warrant, that we commit to the warrant and refer to the planning board for their public hearing.
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? As many as are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. All right, the motion passes.
Did we refer the second one? We did three, right? Did we refer the second one to the planning board?
Yes. I don't know.
Yeah, I think we'll have to go back and.
Yeah, why don't we just do that right now? Just refer them all as a package.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I move to refer all of the relevant planning board articles that we just referred, reviewed to the planning board.
Second.
For public hearing.
Second.
Any additional discussion? As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The motion passes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. So I'm just going to highlight a couple of things on our agenda tonight. So coming up under new business, current business, so I just want to note, so presentation of environmental policies. I did have a communication with a member of the board prior to tonight, but I just want to advise the board. So these are policies that I had proposed last year for discussion because they're being seen by two members for the first time. They're just being presented tonight. They're in the Google Drive. I have zero intention on talking about this tonight, but I just want to make these available for you to review. There's got to, you know, this is, to clarify, this is a starting point. I provided some draft policies. I also provided all the supporting documentation. I want to verify that actually in the drive, but all the supporting documentation that goes with them in terms of how we arrived at those and I'll make sure that we get those into the drive as well. Because there's, oh yeah, it's called environmental policy research. And so it goes in order of the different sections and it's numerous pages of, you know, how I arrived at this draft. I'm not married to this draft. This is just the starting point in the conversation. So, you know, there's more work to be done, especially when it comes to getting this through having our staff review this and provide their feedback, other boards review it and provide feedback. You know, this was something that was dropped off last year. As you can see, it was presented in October. We intended to pick it up in January and the, the board got a little sidetracked. So, you know, we will discuss this at a future date. I'm not even saying next week because I think it's a bit meaty, a bit heavy to digest. So I would encourage the board to review them so that way we are better prepared at a future date. And so that's just a note on that portion. All right. And then going back to where we currently are, I want to turn to the town managers for, she has a couple of appointments she'd like to present. And then she has a town manager's report and they have a couple of administrative stuff. So hopefully we'll be out of here in about thirty minutes for the town manager.
Okay. I'm on the clock, so. The first list of appointments that I'm asking the board to ratify is annual appointments for special police officers from the town of Townsend. And I can read those off. The chief of police, chief of police, James Sartell, Lieutenant Christopher Peach, Sergeant George Reedy, Sergeant David Phillips, Sergeant Jeffrey Giles, Officer Mark Francis, Officer Michael Merschand, Officer Christopher Lowe, Officer Eric Mudica, Officer Christopher Tucker, Officer Dylan Savistri, Officer Matthew Faria, Officer Peter Eldridge, Officer Dylan Dennis, Officer Rafael Huertas, and Reserve Officer Austin Cody.
And for the newer members of the board, this is part of our agreements with surrounding communities, primarily Townsend, in which we agree for their offices to have jurisdiction in our community and for us to have jurisdiction in theirs as we have community support agreements. So I'll make the motion. I move to appoint the officers from Townsend as read by the town manager.
Second.
All right, let me finish. As read by the town manager, as special officers for the town of Lonerburg.
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. All right. And to the town manager for the, for the next appointment?
And the next appointment is for the appointment of Robert DeConza as a civilian traffic member. And Robert, who also goes by Bob, is a retired lieutenant police officer, retired after serving with the department for twenty years, both full-time and part-time. He retired in good standing and meets all the requirements to become a member of this unit. And this would be effective October fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
Tomorrow? All right. Is there a motion from the board?
I move to ratify the town manager's appointment of retired officer Robert, AKA Bob DeConza to civilian traffic member effective October fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, to what many call the best part of our meeting, the town manager's report.
I will start with boarding committee commission vacancies. There is one vacancy on the architectural preservation district commission, one vacancy into the next annual town election on the cemetery commission, two vacancies on the finance committee, one regular member and one associate vacancy on the green communities committee, one member-at-large vacancy for the open space committee, and one vacancy on the personnel committee. And anyone interested in any of these positions can find the volunteer application on the website, complete it and return it to the Suck Board's office. And if you have any questions on the roles and responsibilities, you can contact our office at nine seven eight five eight two four one three zero extension one four four. For employment opportunities for the town, the following is a list of current job openings. The assistant to the sewer business manager, nineteen hours a week, assistant town accountant, thirty-two hours a week, assistant meal site manager, nineteen and a half hours a week, conservation administrator, thirty-six hours a week, facility superintendent, forty hours a week, finance director, forty hours a week, two heavy equipment operator positions for forty hours a week, land use director, forty hours a week, principal assessor, forty hours a week, seasonal cemetery labors, which hours, they usually work until October, November timeframe. So it's going to be a short season this, nine twenty-three, but they'd start up in the spring. And videographer positions that hours vary between two and ten hours a week. Information on these positions can be found on the town website under job opportunities. An update on the certification of property values project with Vision Government Solutions.
Before you move on to that, at our next, at our next meeting on the tenth, I've asked the town manager to prepare for the board an update, a detailed update regarding the recruitment activities that are related to these positions, efforts that are being made by the town manager, assistant town manager, HR director, to fill these positions, some of the challenges they've experienced, and actions that we can take through our state delegation or others to help promote a better pipeline for some of these jobs and roles. So we should expect to hear that from the town manager next week. So thank you for that, Heather, in advance.
Welcome. Back to update on certification of property values project with Vision Government Solutions. Last week, there was a kickoff meeting with Mike Torello of Vision, our consultant Nate Kramer of Municipal Finance Services, the interim principal assessor, Rena Suizy, and myself. We discussed the timeline of the project, updates to the board of assessors, and next steps. Vision is finishing up a number of projects right now, so the first phase of sales analysis and verification will begin around mid-October, but will still be complete according to the timetable in their bid. As part of the sales analysis and verification process, Mike Torello will review the sales file and then town will send any sales verification forms we receive to Vision. Vision would like to meet with the board of assessors in mid-October to explain this process and answer questions. We also discussed getting information out as early as possible and throughout the process so taxpayers would be aware of what to expect and be part of positive public relations. Any questions?
No.
Community compact best practices grant application. I applied for the community compact best practices grant last week. Towns can apply for up to two best practices, which are outlined in the state's program guidelines. The two best practices I requested funding were for, were financial management category to utilize the services of the Collins Center to create a comprehensive package of financial management policies, financial procedures manual, and a memorandum detailing any additional findings and recommendations regarding the financial structure and general administrative practices. This request was for thirty thousand. The second category was resilient and reliable transportation category to create a multi-year asset management plan that inventories and rates the condition of our bridges and culverts. This request was for twenty-five thousand. Both of these projects are part of, part of my FY twenty-four goals as they will be extremely valuable to the town once completed. As we're all well aware, having written policies and procedures, identify laws and regulations that need to be complied with, provide guidelines for financial decision-making, and outlines for internal processes that should be followed by all stakeholders. The additional value of this best practice would be the inclusion of a high-level review of the overall management structure and recommendations for improvements that will address prior year annual audit comments, a financial management review done by the Department of Revenue in two thousand eight, and will address questions about financial management structure in light of this past year's tax assessment issues. The second best practice will be critical information we are lacking in our capital planning process right now and overall long-term planning. We have twenty-six bridges and large culverts and we do not have a corresponding management plan of when they need to be repaired or replaced, or the associated costs. To give an idea of financial impact, we have approximately nine hundred thousand in local funds and the small bridge grant funds to reconstruct the Flat Hill Road culvert. The end product will be similar to our pavement management plan with the inventory assessment, priority rankings, and estimated costs. Any questions on that?
I just have one. You know, I just want to be sure that, you know, what I see happening in some of our surrounding communities, Pittsburgh, you know, I know that they're getting, you know, painting murals and other things. I don't know the funding sources. I'm sure some of it's grants. But, you know, they get to go to the state and cry poorhouse and, and get loaded with tons of money. And some of it, you know, could just be that they don't prioritize the management of their projects. Are we going to find ourselves, and obviously I know good management is the best practice, but are we going to find ourselves at a disadvantage if we, if we do what most people don't do, which is properly manage their assets and resources in terms of our ability to get funding from the state for these projects?
You're talking about the bridges and culverts?
Yeah.
So.
Like, are we going to box ourselves into a situation where the state's going to look at us and say, well, you guys have plenty of money. You don't need our help?
No, I mean, perfect example is the Flat Hill Culvert project. We got funding through the state for their. We got funding through the state for the small bridge grant program for that. We got the maximum for that project. We've received money from the state for the Pleasant Bridge project as well. So it's also having, identifying the, the costs associated is a big component of applying for these grant funds.
Yeah.
And doing the preliminary engineering work that needs to go along with it, getting it to a certain percentage design phase.
I think what I, I think I can reword my question a little bit. As part of the grant application process, do we have to provide evidence that we don't have stabilization funds or, or management plans for these kinds of things?
For which grant?
For a culvert, for like, using the nine hundred thousand dollars.
The small bridge grant, I don't remember any component of that. It's asked basically what have been your steps thus far, pretty much, and what you've done.
Okay.
If it qualifies under certain program guidelines, like it's, that bridge program is, I think it's under twenty-feet span of bridge and other criteria, it wasn't, wasn't a factor as far as how much, you know, the, the funds that the town has available through general operating budget.
Mr. Chair, if I may comment on, on your question. I think having a management plan that this grant application would help us do would actually help us get grants for two reasons. First of all, it would identify to us things that are unknown to us right now about what isn't being done. And it would, it would be easier to prepare and show that we are prepared when the time comes to apply, that we have put in all the groundwork, so we know this is when this has to be done. And most of the grants, I think, are for construction in nature. That's where the real cost is, is building them, not, not identifying which ones need to be done. So I, I think it would actually work in our favor. I mean, I understand the point of your question, and, and I take it as such, but I think this actually does the, I think it helps us.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you.
All right. Update on Invitation for Bids and Requests for Proposals. Bids for the Public Safety Carport project were due on September twentieth, and we received one bid from Diversified Construction Services for five hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. When this project was put out to bid in June of two thousand twenty-one, we received two bids, and the low bid was two hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We currently have a hundred and thirty-five thousand in the fiscal twenty-one capital plan appropriation. Thus, both bids far exceed the available funds for this project. After speaking with the police chief and the facilities director, we all agree that we will not be pursuing this project, and I will be requesting these funds be re-appropriated at a future town meeting.
What about doing like a solar carport?
I think diversified construction services is a bit too diversified.
Bids for the two DPW trucks were due yesterday, and we received one bid from Minuteman Trucks LLC for two F seven fifty trucks totaling four hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, not including trade-in values for the decommissioned trucks. This amount is equivalent, I'm gonna let someone in the waiting room. This amount is equivalent to what was committed through ARPA funding. We will be putting the decommissioned trucks on municipal to see if we can receive more than the trade-in value of the trucks, and then we'll award the bid based on those results. Also, the anticipated delivery date by Minuteman is on or before June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Hallelujah.
The DPW Director had Mayor Tree Service remove fifteen years of accumulated brush from the yard waste area at the Capland Phil site as there was no room for more brush. They performed the work under the state contract for solid waste and recycling services, category ten, organic leaves, yard waste, floating vegetation, and category seventeen wood. So thank you to the DPW Director for getting that done. Route two A, Chase Road, Electric Ave, and Lunenburg Crossing intersections, VHB, which is a consulting company, engineering company, held a kickoff meeting for the road safety audit on Thursday, September twenty-eighth at ten a.m. at the Public Safety Building. The meeting was attended by myself, the police chief, the fire chief, the DPW Director, engineers from VHB, engineers from Mass DOT District Three, and engineers from Mass DOT Headquarters. The issues with the two intersections were discussed. A field investigation was conducted where we, we all traveled to those intersections and observed traffic, and then back to the Public Safety Building to discuss mitigation solutions. A write-up of proposed solutions will be forthcoming at a date unknown.
Thank you.
Definitely progress on, that took a lot of effort and
Oh, no, I know.
Persistence by the DPW Director, and I know the police and fire chief as well, so I'm gonna thank them for being persistent.
I was gonna bring what, what I'm gonna bring up under action files, but since this is a topic, I did have somebody reach out to me about this intersection, that the lines are so faded, so there's no way of knowing when you get to the intersection, which is already dangerous enough, that you don't know what lane you're in, especially at night, and especially if it's raining. So whatever can be done in the short term, I don't know, but the, I did want to relay, I have related to the DPW Director, but I'll just bring it up here, if you could follow up and, and see what can be done.
Which, which intersection?
This intersection.
The Chase Road on to Mass Ave or the?
No, no, I'm sorry, Electric Ave, by, by the Walmart, by Walmart, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Cause both, both were distance.
Right, no, this one was, this was not the Hollis Road light, no, it's the Walmart light.
I think the Hollis Road was recently repainted.
Yeah.
Just some arrows, so I know a resident of ours works at Tiny's, where I go get breakfast sometimes, and she mentioned it to me. And, and that was recently done. While you're making your note, do we have a member of the board that's on, our representative for MPO, Monitor of Planning, or MJTC?
I'm on one of them. I'm on the, the.
Probably MPO.
Yeah.
My question is, the bridge at Route two, what's the timeline for that?
Route seventy, you mean?
Route seventy.
I don't know, but I could find out.
Okay, do you have anything on that?
They didn't, their last meeting was scheduled to be a couple days after the flooding, so they canceled it, so they haven't met in a while.
All right, yeah, that's, it's not the end of the world, but it's adding, you know, five minutes to everyone's commuting time. So, you know, I know in the morning, time matters, five minutes is a big difference, especially if you're going to the Concord Rotary. All right.
Especially when you're planning for dinner at six fifty-seven on the way back.
All right. You are correct. All right. The next section to the town manager, would it be okay going forward if you move employee highlights into the announcement section of the agenda, so that way we hit this earlier in the evening? But for tonight, I know you're about to hit them.
Okay. I can, we'll talk.
Yeah.
Interrupting my flow.
I know, I know, I keep interrupting, all right.
So, last section of the town manager report is newer section, Employee Highlights. This weekend, different staff members participated, participated in fundraising events for different causes. Council on Aging Director Sue Doherty, the Outreach Coordinator Pauline Roy, and Diane Noid of the Council on Aging participated in the Alzheimer's Walk in Worcester. The name of their team was the Lunenburg Purple Turtles, and the money they raised goes to the Alzheimer's Association. Police Chief Gamble participated with other Massachusetts chiefs in the Jimmy Fund Walk, and that was in Boston, this weekend as well, and the name of their team was Team Police Chiefs. Not as creative as.
No, none of them.
Purple Turtles. And the money they raised goes to support cancer research and patient care at Dana Farber. Thank you to the employees recognized here and those that we are unaware of for participating in causes like these. The Economic Development Committee Public Official Meet and Greet was on Thursday, September twenty-eighth, and there was a great turnout. Thank you to Low Places Ranch for opening up their beautiful location for the event, Josie Gilchrist and the Economic Development Committee for putting the event together, Lunenburg business owners, staff, and committee members for attending. For staff, the DPW Director, Bill Bernard, Fire Chief Pat Sullivan, Board of Health Administrative Assistant Andrea Schneff, Planning Board Administrative Assistant Annie Aubrey, Conservation Administrative Assistant Ashley Deneo, Building Commissioner Brian Gingras, Executive Assistant Lane Peterson, and IT Administrative Assistant Cara McCarthy were all there, and thank them for making the time to attend and connect with other local business owners.
All right. Thank you to the town manager for that, for the report. All right. We're gonna go to old business, and so what we have coming up is signing an amendment for the Lunenburg Liquor Mart, and this is a correction of the square footage. So I will pass this down. The board previously approved this, and the square footage, I'm not sure what it initially said, but I know right now it says three thousand. All right, and while we are signing this, so we had discussed adding an animal bylaw into the special town meeting, this is related to the nuisance dogs. I think we should do this in the spring. You know, attempting to work on this over the weekend, my thought was we probably shouldn't rough justice this at the eleventh hour, and let's just take a little more time.
I totally agree, Mr. Chair.
So, but if we can start to work through the articles, so for our newer members, we do have to accept the, just about all of them. Let's just say we're accepting all of them. But we do have to go through them, and it's up to the select board to decide what makes it to the warrant. It's our pattern to show deference to other elected boards, but staff members especially, and boards that we appoint, typically, we always wanna review and decide if it's gonna make it. I think our pattern is to let most things through. And let the community decide, so we can kinda walk through them. So we have A, and this is the special town meeting word articles. I'll wait for the town manager to get to the point to take some notes. Okay. We have A, we are, I'm, I'm making a list here, so that way we can do one motion. And this is the typical.
Is this just for inclusion?
Inclusion.
Okay.
Recommendations are next week.
Right, so I was gonna say, it would be easier if you would entertain a suggestion to just ask anybody if there's anything they want to not, you know, take up and discuss, cause then we could just approve everything else.
Yeah, that's a good, good time-sensitive way, so, uh, let's see. A, I know that we gotta pull out the one with the animals, I gotta find it.
It's J.
J. So we're removing J.
And we did D.
Yep, and we already did D, M, N, O, P, and Q.
It's okay if they're doubling.
We can do it again, yeah. All right, that's the only one that I think needs to get removed. Is there anything else you're identifying, town manager? All right. And, okay. I don't think we need to publicly present them tonight, we can do that next week when we do our recommendations, but I know that we need to get this over to the Finance Committee, so they can do their public hearing next week. All right, so we're gonna remove Article J.
I would make a motion that we include all articles on our draft special town meeting articles as presented, exclude, with the exclusion of J being the animal bylaw.
Second.
Any additional discussion? As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. And for Lane, the motion passes unanimously. All right. Discuss disposition of town property, so let me find this in our folder drive. So we should have in our folders, Town Properties, so we have a folder called Town Properties. And this is in our overall folders that includes like the months and the, you know, that were on, so Town Properties folder. And then in this, we have a map that's challenging, cause it shows everything. And then what we have really is, is the list that we utilized from last year. And these are properties I've pulled out of our list for the Walem area, center of town area, the Hickory Hills area, and then also the Lake Shirley area. So part of the reason why, why I've added this to the agenda is I was picking up from a conversation we started last year in which trying to identify disposition for some of these properties. Why are we holding them, is there a reason for it? And then seeing if there's a policy to create that identifies the rationale why we're holding them. Other part is, are there some parcels that we have through tax title, other purposes, that we might wanna consider selling? And so, or, or asking, of course, town meeting to sell. So last year, we started the process in the center. We went to, you know, a couple parcels last, last summer. So what I would like is for the, you know, for, we don't have to do this tonight, but, you know, we can communicate outside of meetings without violating open meeting law as long as we're coordinating upcoming meetings. So I would like to, if members can kinda look at their Saturdays as they come up over the course of the next couple of weeks, and identify if you have Saturdays that you are available, not available. It would be helpful if we can just do some sight walks to see, I specifically wanna go to the Walem area first. But, you know, it's up to the board. But if we can look at our Saturdays over the course of the month and see if we can set aside, you know, ninety minutes to, to hit, you know, one of these columns. The ones in Walem are, are pretty much near each other, and the ones in the center of town are, are equally not too far apart. And then, you know, I know that the ones in Lake Shirley, we have quite a bit of property in that area, but they're really small and tiny. So I will follow up with the board via text or otherwise to see what dates work. Does that sound fair?
Sure.
All right. So for our current business, sign the bond anticipation note. So to the town manager, do you wanna just present this briefly to the board?
This is a note on the ladder truck and the Saliba property. So the amount is one fifty-two, four ninety-nine, and ninety-six thousand, ninety-nine dollars of that is the ladder truck, fifty-six thousand, four hundred is the Saliba land. And in our debt schedule, this is the second-to-last year of paying them.
Okay.
So when will, how long is this banned for? When is it gonna?
One year.
One year, okay.
All right. We have a lot of signatures. Any that are to the clerk? No. All right. Let's do a motion on this one. Motion assigned.
Move that we sign the banned anticipation note for a hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred ninety-nine dollars as presented by the town manager.
Second.
Any additional discussion? As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. All right, we have one, two, three, four, five signatures to do. All right, we have several minutes to approve. Just jumping back, you know, the town, of course, is always welcome, members are always welcome to go visit and look at our properties, the properties under the carrying custody of the select board. At any time, you don't need a special invitation. So you guys are always welcome to look at them, and that may be an efficient way to kinda knock some of this list out if you guys do have the time to do it. I think I've walked just about all of them, so. All right, going into approval of minutes, we have minutes from July the eleventh, July the eighteenth, and August the first. Is there a motion to approve?
I note that Caesar was not here on the first, the August first one, right?
Yes.
So.
Probably correct.
But Caesar watches all the meetings.
Yeah, I do.
So in that case, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July eleventh, July eighteenth, and August first as presented.
I'll second.
Any additional discussion? All right. As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Excellent. All right, we have no warrants tonight, and we signed them last week, so we will have some next week. Any action items?
Just one, again, along with line painting, so while it was a wonderful Economic Development Committee meet and greet, I didn't realize, again, how dangerous it was going home, because it's, it was dark. because it's, it was dark, it's a narrow road, and there's no lines because obviously it was just paved. So if we can find out when that's going to be paved, when it's going to be painted, I meant, to get at least a stripe down. I didn't realize, I don't travel Goodrich very often because I don't have need to, but it's a really narrow road.
Yeah, yeah, super windy.
Yeah, windy and narrow.
Is that road usually painted in?
Yeah, I'm wondering, does that even ever have lines?
It should. Every road, I am of the belief that every road that's not lit should, even if it's just a centerline, you don't need maybe not shoulder lines, but just some line that gets reflected, you know, because otherwise, you're just, I mean, it.
It's dark.
It was dark, and it had, you know, the shoulders are dirt, so it's dark, and there's no streetlights.
Yep.
And, you know, it's just really, it's dangerous.
All right. That's for the Town Manager. Any other action items? I don't, you know, I've driven it quite a bit, and I don't, I honestly don't recall ever seeing the lines in that.
Oh, well, it may be.
But it could be that they were always painted whenever I did.
Yeah.
All right, committee reports.
I have, the school committee met on the 20th. Bill Bernard will be managing the sidewalk project. They have hired a director of facilities, and I didn't manage to catch his name, and I didn't have a chance to go back and watch the recording. But start date is October 23rd. They have published their bullying prevention and intervention plan on the website and are seeking public feedback on that, targeting approval at their October 18th meeting, depending on feedback that they receive. From the personnel report, there was one retirement announced. Jerry Sampson is retiring November 1st after 32 years at Lunenburg Middle High School. So congratulations and wish her happy retirement. Have to say I'm jealous. But 32 years, that's a long time. You don't, it's not common that you hear someone staying, you know, at the same company or same job for decades. So, well deserved. What else? They are working on the draft of their capital plan. There was a lot of discussion around replacement of the playground equipment at the primary school, talking about possibly doing that in phases. And also, kind of tied to that was, was, I think, the driveway. I didn't write it, but I seem to remember that. So special note that the capital plan they have drafted was done so in the absence of Facilities Director. So I think that's on the agenda for tomorrow night's meeting, too. So again, Facilities Director doesn't start till the end of the month, so. Little caveat with that. And that's it.
Hey, Renee, I have a question for you, and this is probably going to come both you and to Heather. Is there any conversation about the Town Clerk's pay?
With the school committee?
No, 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 you said personnel.
Personnel report for the school.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, no. No, just the, yeah, the school personnel, resignations, openings.
Okay.
The turnover, actually, there was a lot of turnover. Mr. Cassidy did mention an open teaching position that they were having difficulty filling, so it's not. It's everywhere.
All right, I'll come to the Town Manager to that question.
I can answer it. So the Personnel Committee is going through the process of reading positions using a position reading manual. And that's essentially to see, using that manual, if they're classified, you know, according to the manual where they should. There's the outliers, they take a deeper dive. Doesn't mean that anyone's position is changing. A rate of pay, by no means. And it's just part of a much larger process that they're doing, looking at all positions. Right now, Town Clerk, because it's an elected position, is not in the Salary Administration Plan. So that would, and it's always an appropriation made within the budget at Town Meeting.
All right.
So, but it has, it is something I've talked to the Assistant Town Manager on and getting some comps on, so we can hopefully address it at that same point.
Okay, so hopefully, I mean, we're going to, we're going to, we're negotiating with the clerical union. You know, I know the Town Clerk job is a little different than what's typically in the clerical union. But I mean, I think it would be, I think we need to do something there, so.
Okay. I'm just pointing out, it's not a union position. It's not a part of the Salary Administration Plan. It's kind of a unicorn on its own. So I hear and understand where you're saying we need to address, you know, universally, so.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to get it addressed sooner than later because I, you know, as we look at it, I, you know, it's pretty obvious that every other community around us pays their Town Clerk about $20,000, at least $20,000 more. So, you know, and I, you know, I don't know what the normal working schedule is, but I do see the Town Clerk here on Saturdays, and I do know that she's working quite a bit. And, you know, her salary certainly needs to increase. So I would urge that we look into this pretty heavily so that way we're not leaving her behind as we think about department heads, as we think about clerical union, that we're thinking about her, too. All right, okay, Mr. Alonso.
Just that the FinCom is meeting this Thursday, and we are working to set the next meeting and the beginning of the real work of the Capital Planning Committee in mid-October. I'm trying to arrange dates. But because of the composition of the Capital Planning, it's tricky, and especially tricky this month because a lot of this, the weeks coincide with, we either meet on Mondays and Wednesdays, and we have a school committee member, and we have a planning board member. So we, usually they're offset, but this week is the amount of Tuesdays or Mondays in the month. So anyway, that's a long way of saying we haven't set the date, but it will be by mid, in mid, probably going to be late this, it's October now. Maybe as early as the 16th. I have to see if the Planning Board has a meeting on the 16th. I will have to contact Mr. Brenner about that.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso.
So, Planning Board was here tonight to help us and the community understand their warrant articles. They did meet yesterday, but it was pretty standard, and I didn't feel like there was anything that was relevant sharing here. And as I mentioned earlier, the MRPC has not met in quite a while, so.
Okay.
I, as you know, did not attend the Select Board meeting of September 19th, so I didn't report on that evening that the Master Plan Steering Committee had its kickoff or first meeting on the 18th. The, and that was mostly for the purposes of, you know, organizing that committee, an overview of the master plan process, meeting the consultants, and discussing the schedule. The, that said, the next meeting of the Master Plan Steering Committee will be on this Thursday, October 5th, at 6:00 PM in this room.
I have a couple. I've had a really busy two weeks. I have more than a couple, I have a few. I met with the, with the delegation from the Water District and Ty and Bond to discuss the ARPA funds that were distributed to them and the public education component of those funds and how they're going to outline and kind of proceed with that. And so it was just a kickoff kind of preliminary discussion. I think that there was, you know, really good key points about how to approach the public awareness. You know, basically, the gist of what came out of that was, you know, having community meetings, adding pamphlets into the, into the water bills, then also having some form of marketing campaign to advise the public of the, where the information is located at, where the meeting is going to be at. So with the expectations that there's going to be a follow-up meeting this month in which Ty and Bond is going to present kind of what that outline looks like and kind of start the process of drafting these materials. But their target is to have the meeting in the, I believe it was beginning of February time period, end of January, I think is what their target is. Last week, or two weeks ago, Heather and I attended the Chamber of Commerce reception. This is for regional elected officials that went, this is hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, and it's hosted by Monit Tech, not Monit Tech, Mount Wachusett Community College, supported by the Chamber of Commerce. So a couple of things were good that came out of that. Number one, being that the North Central Mass Chamber of Commerce was, received an award for being the best Chamber of Commerce in the United States, which is quite phenomenal, given their impact, breadth of work. So, and it was just another good opportunity to rub elbows with other elected officials, you know, surrounding mayors and members of the, of the state, who are part of the state team. I also met with Habitat for Humanity. Habitat for Humanity and I met here last week to go over kind of what their program offers. And so the bottom line here is that they're looking for land. The plus side, land at next to no cost. And the plus side is that they have a really good model in which they have these engineered plans for structures that are, you know, one-story, they're about 1,200 square feet. They have a partnership with Monit Tech and Limminster Tech, and they are able to come in and build these homes. They sell them, and they target people who are roughly, I think, 60% market rate. So they sell these houses for between 197, I believe she said, and 217,000, that they do a no-interest loan, and that the monthly payments that the owners make are for taxes, insurance, and the principal of their balance. That there is a way to do resident preference in this, in this system. And so what this could be is a model for how we can hit our 10% housing cap and have expansion capacities so that way in the future they can continue to build. So there, you know, I've invited them to come, and I haven't set a date, but provide the board with a presentation so that way they can give us a walkthrough. But I think there's, the benefits to our community are huge, especially as we think about seniors that are looking to downsize, having some kind of resident preference in the housing model would really give them that opportunity, especially seniors who are making about 60% of market, which right now is about 60-something thousand dollars a year, which many seniors fall into. And, you know, there's a bit more to the program. I'm certainly simplifying it. But I thought it was a really good productive conversation, and I will come back to the board when we can schedule that presentation. Mr. Alonso, actually, every member of the board attended the last Board of Assessors meeting in some part, so I was only there at the very beginning of it. And, but Mr. Alonso, I don't know if you stayed for the full meeting.
I did.
Do you want to give just a brief update on that?
Oh, sure, and thank you for reminding me because I was going to report on that. So first of all, I want to thank the new members, Brian LaFond and Sarah Cammer, they were there for their first meeting. And the three with, with Jack Rabbit, who was the, the last existing member, they reorganized. And they discussed what their next steps would be as far as the valuation, the five-year valuation that, that Vision will be doing. So they discussed that at length. They discussed items that they would like to address as a, as a board that were kind of identified during the tax issue problem this, this year, and how they would approach that. So they all really rolled up their sleeves, and I think they're ready to get to work. And I think their next meeting will be to start prioritizing what they want to do. As you said, Mr. Chair, and as I echoed as well, that, you know, there's a lot to be done, and you don't want them to bite off too much. Like do things that you can accomplish that will really have the greatest impact and leave some of it for later. So do the higher priority things, and that's what they're, the new members are, some catching up to do. Both of the new members are well on their way to their final certification. They've completed some of the, bulk of their courses already. So it was a very good, very good meeting.
All right, thank you. I have two more updates on Municipal Building Design Committee. We were scheduled to meet yesterday, but unfortunately, we weren't able to achieve quorum. But where we are at, and some of that could have been on me. I had a typo in the web address. Instead of a forward slash, I had a period. And so, you know, you had to manually type in the numbers. All right, so it could have been my fault in that part. So what we're doing right now is meeting with the school committee as we identify that Phase 3 seems to have some overlap between Turkey Hill and TC Pass Hills. So last night was initial meeting with the Chair of the school committee. Of course, we couldn't have the conversation, but we're expecting the full school committee and superintendent to be in attendance at our next meeting, which is on the, two weeks from yesterday. All right, we meet on the first and, first and third Mondays every month via Zoom at 6:00 PM. And the last thing I want to note is, at the Chamber of Commerce reception, I made contact with a consultant company. And this goes to solar panels in the old town dump. So basically, through some lobbying that I did through mass development, as well as through our state delegation, the previous language related to funding for, for brownfield redevelopment was limited to communities that have a population that is economically depressed, which Lunenburg does not have a significant enough population to meet those criteria. So the advocacy was to change the law to incorporate every community, not just the cities. And so the law was changed, and so Lunenburg is now eligible for some of this brownfield development funding. So one of the consultants that we made contact with identified that what they do is they work with municipalities to help redevelop their, their brownfields, you know, like our old dump. And basically, for the cost of a consulting fee, which is roughly 20 to 25,000 dollars, that they have a model that allows the community to get solar panels on their dumps at no additional cost to the municipality. And so there's certainly more conversations to be had because if we can get solar panels in the old dump and, and no more money to us and generate income and offset our carbon footprint, that's the way to go. So I will be trying to coordinate a presentation with them. I'm also going to reach out to Green Communities Committee and involve them in that process as well. So as I said, it's been a busy couple of weeks.
I'm just interested because I know in the past, and when I'm talking about the past, I'm talking like 10 years in the past or something, that we looked at, and I realized that the solar industry was really fledgling then, but we looked at putting solar fields there. And there was a real concern because we had spent so much money capping it because we spent, it was not properly capped. We had spent a lot of money, a lot of oversight from DEP back then. And then nobody wanted to worry about puncturing it, puncturing the cap and disturbing it. So I'm wondering what's changed. I mean, maybe there's a lot of engineering changes, but, I mean, it's, we were interested back then, the boards were, and so I'm glad that it's coming up now. I'm just wondering what has changed for that risk factor.
Yeah, you know, that's something I can reach out to him about. I did mention that it was capped, and what he said was that's actually a good thing for what they do. So I'm guessing that this is something that many communities may have found themselves in, that there is probably some engineering change. So I will be looking to schedule them within the next month or so to be able to come and present to us. Because certainly, if, if the article relating to ARPA passes and more funding is available, this may be the best $20,000 we could spend, especially if we think return on investment. All right. And those are the updates that I have. Anything else? All right, upcoming meeting schedule. And we're a little past our 9:30 goal. Upcoming meeting, the Select Board will be meeting on the 10th, 17th, and 24th of this month. As noted, on the October the 11th, we have a ribbon cutting for the new ADA patio. This could happen at noon. Rain or shine, at the Lunenburg Adult Activities Center, also known as the Eagle House. And then on November the 14th, special town meeting, 7:00 PM at the Lunenburg Middle Senior High School Auditorium. All right, do we have any public comments this evening from the Town Manager?
None.
Any from the public?
There's one person on, but.
Let's see, we have someone that's called in. Mr. Rogers, do you have a public comment for us this evening? What's the code to unmute?
It's pound nine.
Pound nine.
No, pound nine raises your hand.
Hi, how's that?
There we go.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rogers.
Dave Rogers, 82 Highland Street. First of all, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to correct you on the description of the dump. We have always called it the sanitary landfill. So maybe you could, maybe you could change that on all the paperwork. The sanitary land would be good. Anyway.
Thank you for that correction, Mr. Rogers.
You're welcome. All right, moving on. I, I'm calling because I sensed a fair amount of frustration. Um, I, um, I'm calling, uh, because I, I sense, uh, a fair amount of frustration, uh, in the town, uh, and I, I, I just wanted to comment and, and to, to, uh, take a minute and, and thank, uh, all of the elected, the appointed, the committees and all of the people that volunteer and, and, and mostly, um, because there's so many of them, the, the staff of the town. I, I think that they, uh, are working very, very hard and they don't necessarily get the credit that, uh, they should. And, uh, I think that, uh, some preliminary discussion has been, uh, started, um, uh, for, uh, looking at the, at the pay structure. I think that, uh, uh, that would be a, a very, very good thing. Um, and the last thing I want to, want to say is that, you know, I've, I've been, Sarah and I and, and our family have been here for 50 years and we've, we've seen some, uh, good times and some bad times, uh, but the, the, the folks in Lunenburg always band together and we, we, we get it done and I think we can do the same thing. Um, and I know that there's a lot going on, but if we just take a deep breath and, uh, let civility, uh, prevail and, and, and work, uh, together, I think we can, uh, get everything done and I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, discuss, uh, that with you. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you for that comment, Mr. Rogers. I really appreciate it. All right. Any other public comments this evening from the public? And any from the board? All right.
Do you have any? Uh, I do have one. I, I, we did, as was noted in the opening public comment, we did receive the, uh, the report from the state regarding the open meeting law violation, uh, request that was put in. And I think we should, as a board at some point, uh, that maybe at the next meeting or something, discuss what our response should be. Because as I said in my response, uh, this evening, I think that it was errantly decided for the reasons that we put forward through our town council in our, uh, response to the initial complaint. And I think potentially an appeal of such a thing is, is necessary, even if it is not successful, to just point out what I think are clear contradictions in the decision. Um, so I just wanted to point that out.
Heather's going to check real quick on, um, our appeal period timeline because we may have to call a meeting before Tuesday, but I wanted to double check.
No, we have 21 days.
All right. So we have time. We'll add it to the agenda for next week.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other public comments this evening from the board? All right. Uh, the time is 9:53. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. To those at home, thank you for joining us this evening. We know that, uh, it's a commitment to stay engaged in your community as we look around us and see what kind of happens in the world. You know, participatory democracy is the best form of government. Um, sometimes it's messy, sometimes it's challenging, uh, but it is a system that we have and, and we believe it's the best system that there can be. So just want to thank everyone at home for paying attention and for volunteering. Uh, we know whether you volunteer at your church, at your, uh, food bank, um, and, and other nonprofit or for-profit organizations, um, you know, thank you for all the service that makes a community what it is. And with that, uh, hope everyone has a wonderful evening. Have a good night.